Good evening, everyone. I will call this council meeting to order, made the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Do not believe we have any remote electronic attendance. And should our two aldermen show up, they'll be added to the attendance record, correct?
Did you answer Alderman Lawyer?
I... So he's not attending?
Right.
Alderman is unable to attend. Okay, thank you very much. But we'll start today with three odes of office. First, Chris Johnson. Chief Frankyweather, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. May your honor, good evening, members of council. I'm very excited to stand before you tonight and introduce to you three individuals receiving their well-deserved promotions and appointments. These three gentlemen define exactly what it means to be community servants working in public safety. They're not just firefighters. Each of these individuals respectively have served in various capacities throughout their careers ranging from part-time police officers to tactically EMS officers on the SWAT team, special team members on the Mavis Technical Rescue and Hazmat Teams, and as EMS educators in various colleges in our area. To say they live and breathe public safety and community service is putting it lightly, and we're very fortunate to have them working for us at the Moline Fire Department. So, without further ado, I'll introduce to you first Deputy Chief Chris Johnson. Chris was hired May 1st of 2000. He was appointed to engineer October 3rd of 2010, 2010. Promoted to lieutenant January 3rd of 2018, and effective August 28th, he will serve as Deputy Chief of Operations for us. He is joined tonight by his wife Paula. Unfortunately, his children Bryn and Jace were unable to attend tonight as they're off to college.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief Chris Johnson.
I'll come down, per these. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chris Johnson.
I, Chris Johnson.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of Deputy Chief.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of Deputy Chief.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And I will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the City of Moline.
And the City of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Deputy Chief.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Deputy Chief.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right. Next, we have Lieutenant Jerry Sotos. Jerry was hired May 1st of 2000, along with Deputy Chief Johnson, as a matter of fact. He was appointed to engineer February 27th, 2011, and effective August 28th, he has been promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Lieutenant Jerry Sotos.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jerry Sotos.
I, Jerry Sotos.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the City of Moline.
And the City of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Justin was hired March 1st of 2010, and effective August 28th, he has been appointed to the position of engineer. Engineer Fredrickson.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Justin Fredrickson.
I, Justin Fredrickson.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of engineer.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of engineer.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the City of Moline.
And the City of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of engineer.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of engineer.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well deserved.
Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Congratulations.
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 Yeah, that's right.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I think they might be doing them in the other rooms.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you. So we move to our next item of business, a proclamation. Shared with us via Palmer College of Chiropractic and our friends at Visit Quad Cities. The proclamation states, whereas what is now known as Palmer College of Chiropractic was founded by D.D. Palmer in 1897 in the Quad Cities, and whereas an estimated 50 million Americans seek chiropractic care each year, and whereas Palmer College of Chiropractic, the oldest and largest college of chiropractic in the world, is headquartered in the Quad Cities, and whereas approximately one-third of all doctors of chiropractic are graduates of Palmer College of Chiropractic, and whereas Palmer Center for Chiropractic Research advances the profession as the largest chiropractic research facility in the nation, now therefore, I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim September 18th, 2022, as Palmer College of Chiropractic Day, and urge all Quad Citizens to celebrate the 125th anniversary of the founding of Palmer College of Chiropractic. There you have it. And we have some representatives with us today.
Good evening. I'd like to say thank you very much. My name's Jim O'Connor, I'm Vice Chancellor for Marketing and Communication at Palmer. I'm here with my colleague Claire Thompson. We'd like to say thank you. When you've been around a long time, it's often easy for people to forget you're there, and we are, we couldn't be more proud to be part of the Quad Cities, and we're so happy that you're proud to have us here as well, and we look forward to our next 125 years. Thank you very much.
First, we begin with the Community and Economic Development Presentations of September Residential Neighbor of the Month Award to Raphael Guzman of 438 16th Avenue, and the September Commercial Neighbor of the Month Award to Nyla Burner Leclair Apartments, mural 421 19th Street. Ms. Whitley.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Won't we start with the commercial one? Or we can start with the residential one? At 438 16th Avenue?
You want him first?
Yeah, that's why. Mr. Guzman wants to come on up, we're recognizing him for his property maintenance. He's recently done some landscaping and retaining wall. Do you have pictures? To the yard? And we'd like for him to come on up and accept his certificate for September. Let me get some pictures.
Oh, we will, that's fine. You do think I was just saying?
Okay, okay, sounds good. And then for the commercial one, Leclair Apartments, built in 1915, became a historical landmark in 1993. For their continued property maintenance of the building, as well as the mural on the exterior of the building, we'd like to recognize them for commercial improvement and maintenance there. So if they'd like to come up as well and accept the award, and let me just grab my camera from the hallway.
Not quite. KJ had to get her camera. Why don't we just scoot up here a little bit?
Do we want to take it together or take them separately? It's up to you. Okay, so everybody come on in?
Come on in.
Okay.
Come on forward, Mr. Guzman.
Side seat, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Then I think Mr. Vitas, you're the next.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Here, I have it. Did you get it here?
Yeah, they got it. Counsel, from this perspective, and I enjoy it, actually. But tonight's a special night, and it's a very special moment for the City of Moline and its achievements in the world of public finance. It's not often that local governments in the U.S. are recognized for this award, and the GFOA does not take this award lightly. This award represents, it represents the efforts of your finance department, its leadership, its middle managers, all of its employees, your department directors, and all those who contribute to making your financial statements reach the highest level or plateau in the world of financial management in local government. So with that, I want to congratulate Carol and her team of financial experts. Not everyone's scared, I know that tonight, but extend my warm appreciation to everybody who couldn't be here as well. But if you take a look at the documents that you were provided with, obviously, they reach a level of transparency and accountability second to none, absolutely second to none, you know? And to attain the award on the first attempt is unheard of. I've only done it once before, and I had a finance director like Carol, really driven and worked hard. And so this is really a great honor to bestow on the city, and if you can just show the plaque. And it's the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award presented to the City of Moline, Illinois, as presented by the Executive Director and CEO Christopher, is that name, Mummel? I think. If I got it wrong, I'm sorry. So we'll be looking at continuing the hard work in our finance department, and looking forward to many more years of receiving this award. The cancer is great, but this is at, this is the pinnacle of public finance. So with that, Carol, congratulations.
No, thank you so much, Bob. And just to kind of expand upon what Bob said, obviously, our finance department did have a huge hand in this, and I think you've heard me over the last few years since I have been here, that I really believe that our finance department is absolutely second to none in the entire Quad City area. And this is just a handful of the staff, but up and down throughout the entire organization, the mayor, the council, Bob, the administrative assistant, all of our department heads, administrative staff, everyone helped with this. And I might just touch upon some of the criteria, and in order to receive the award, you must meet 14 mandatory requirements within 25 categories. And they include, I'm not going to go through all of them, just a handful, but all of our strategic goals with our community input, and it must tie out with all of our financials, so again, a lot of help from all the elected officials, 10 years of financial history and trending, as well as our three-year budgets, projections as part of it. We have to present consolidated financial summaries, financial policies, capital and debt management, personnel with all of our position control summaries across all departments, and the policy, or the document must be proficient as a policy document, a financial plan, operations guide, and a communication device. And I would like to just read one little thing that one of the reviewers wrote, and I just thought this was very interesting, because as a communication device, not everything in the document is financial. And this person wrote, "As I took my first look through Moline's document, it makes me want to take a trip to the city, so that I can see some of the places in person. All the photos and narratives that you give in your document give a hometown feel." And I really have to give hats off to Courtney, that helped make that document being presented the way that it was. And with that, we've got, it's just a one-minute little video from GFOA that we'd like to share.
Greetings from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm Chris Morley, GFOA's Executive Director. It is my honor to recognize you for receiving the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The purposes of this award program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare comprehensive and understandable budget documents that we believe will both improve transparency and trust in government. To earn the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, you met demanding program criteria. Such a record reflects the professionalism, commitment, and dedication of your organization's leaders and finance team. We hope that this award will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own budget documents. Therefore, it is my privilege, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, to present to you this Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes, Mr.?
I just want to add this, thank you guys so much. I mean, you guys have really done an amazing job over the couple of years, especially give us through COVID and all the extra work you guys did through that. I mean, I know a few years ago, we were going off of green bars to what we have today. It is a world of difference, so thank you guys so much for all your hard work. It's amazing, thank you so much.
Thank you. We're moving to public comment now. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, questions on the agenda? Seeing none, we move to our co-agenda items. 8.1, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Task Order Number 22-03 with Strand Associates, Inc., for Engineering Services Related to Design, Implementation, Oversight, and Integration of SCADA and Cybersecurity Improvements at the Water Treatment Plant in the Amount of $317,000. Mr. Vitas?
Mayor and counsel, it's pretty straightforward. What we're looking at is improving our cybersecurity systems at our water treatment plant over a period of several years, and we're recommending approval of the resolution to move that project forward.
Move to approve. Second?
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.2, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute and Attest to the Honorary Street Designation in Honor of David B. Sears, and Authorizing the Director of Public Works to Effectuate the Fabrication and Installation of Approved Signs. Mr. Vitas?
Mayor and counsel, we've arrived. This is something that I felt was important for Moline. It's a historic city, it's probably one of the more important cities in the state of Illinois, and it has a really splendid past, and it needs to be recognized. Mr. Sears, and I don't know if any of his relatives are still alive or in the area, but Mr. Sears was probably one of the most instrumental people in making Moline become what it was in years past as an industrial giant. His harnessing of the Mississippi River to produce power, to deliver that power to the industrial complex that was soon to be built by not only John Deere, but many others, resulted in Moline becoming a leader in the fire management industry worldwide. Today, that world headquarters probably still stands here in the Quad Cities, not incorporate Rock Island County, but next door to Moline and East Moline. So with that, I'm highly recommending that we approve the honorary street designation in honor of David B. Sears, and that would be placed out on the roadway leading from the water treatment plant out to River Drive.
Move to approve. Second?
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And we move to our informationals. 9.1, Pigeon Keeping Ordinance. Is Mr. Boland online, or are you speaking for him, Ms. Kostopoulos?
No, he should be online.
Oh, nice to see you.
There he is.
Everybody?
Take it away, Dan.
Sure, yeah. Council directed staff a while ago to evaluate possible code amendments regarding keeping and selling pigeons in the city. There's a memo in your packet that explains that state law allows the city to regulate, but not prohibit certain pigeons. Those are carrier, racing, hobby, and show pigeons. There's actually a state act that preempts home rule that lets the city regulate, but not ban those types of pigeons. And so the city can ban all other kinds of pigeons, but not those protected pigeons. So what can we do for those protected pigeons? You can require lofts to comply with building codes, and many communities do that. And zoning ordinances can regulate pigeon lofts as accessory uses and require setbacks. And some communities require maintenance standards for pigeon lofts in cleaning disposal. Some require license, some don't, for pigeon keeping. Moline already has some ordinances. Of course, the building code would generally apply to the construction of pigeon lofts. The zoning ordinance doesn't expressly address pigeon keeping, but it might be considered an agricultural service land use, has a special use in the Ag 2 or I 2 districts, and the city also does have existing maintenance standards for pigeon lofts, pigeon enclosures need to be three feet off the ground, weatherproof, not less than five feet from all property lines, and 20 feet from any neighboring buildings. There's also cleaning and maintenance standards in your ordinance. Now, of course, there's also urban henkeeping regulations in the city code that are more extensive, and more extensive than many pigeon keeping ordinances that you might see in other communities. But those are another example of where the city's made adopted regulations for that kind of use. Happy to take direction and comments from counsel.
Comments? Conversation. Mr. Went?
Thanks for the information. So within our code, we were having some problems in a couple of locations where I understand that the state allows for the pigeons to go out, exercise, do their training, do those sorts of things. But, you know, with the hens, we keep them within somebody's property lines. We were running into issues where they would let them out, and then they would wind up just sitting on like the neighbor's roof and pooping all over the place, or whatever. How do you balance those things? Or the noise? There was a reference in there about noise. I know at least one resident wound up selling their house and moving because of this issue, so I'm just trying to see if we can strike a balance. I know we've got a history with the Belgians of, Alderman Williams is nodding his head, about pigeon racing, and so I don't want to stop this, but I want to try to figure out what the balance might be available to us.
Sure, if I might, Mayor, the state act does actually reference the training that you mentioned, but I think where the line might be crossed is where it does involve trespassing on other property, depositing waste on another folk's property. That's, I think that's an area where the city would still have authority to regulate.
So, Mr. Boland, what is the simplest and most enforceable path of action here? Could you hear me?
Yes. I think maybe borrowing a couple of those ideas that I mentioned in other communities. The city does have existing pigeon keeping regulations that are pretty common with what you see in other communities. The one area that might need attention is, there's clear exceptions for like urban henkeeping in the zoning ordinance, for example, or beekeeping, for example, in the zoning ordinance, but making sure this is specifically addressed in the zoning ordinance and requiring compliance with those local standards, and responding to the training and trespass issues that counsel's already mentioned.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Timman?
If I remember correctly, we've only ever issued a permit once for this, is this correct? I just remember, in the, it feels like this is a lot of work for something that might not be a real thing. That's my, like, perception. I'm getting a look that that might not be true, so I don't really know.
No, I do get that sense, that, you know, these, looking around at pigeon keeping ordinances in other communities, it's not really been a pressing issue in many communities. They haven't visited this issue recently, anyway. And so that might be consistent with your experience.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Well, I'm embarrassed, you know, as a 42-year member of Sacred Heart Parish, I didn't know there was even any pigeon keeping left. I mean, is there, is this, we've issued a permit to somebody?
Mr. Williams, everyone's looking to the first one.
Not in the first ward, but if you attend the Belgium Fest this Sunday from noon forward.
I was going to mention that.
There'll be a gentleman there, and there are people that keep them, and, you know, like anything else, that kind of waxes and wanes, and, you know, if someone was to have pigeons again, like up around 7th Street, and there's been talk, someone's going to get some pigeons, we should have an ordinance in place. But as far as letting them out to train and to, you know, trespass and create a nuisance, that can be dealt with quite easily, you know? But if we have an ordinance in place, that would just make it easier. But no, there's not a big group of people raising pigeons like there used to be. In fact, there's only two main groups left in the city that we're aware of.
So, Mr. Schmidt?
And does our, and I'm sorry, I'll just ask, does our current ordinance have in place a licensing fee? Because I know that was
In fact, there's only two main groups left in the city that we're, we're aware of.
So, Mr. Schmidt.
And, does our, and I'm sorry, if, I'll just ask, does our current ordinance have in place a licensing fee? That, because I know that was a conversation where we, we ins- we put in place a licensing fee, or in fact, raised a fee, but said we did, we had to get our ordinance to match that. So is that something we'd have to also put into place?
Ms. Barnes, I saw you say something, sort of.
I believe, I believe that there is a fee.
Yeah.
Okay. I recall it was twenty-five dollars.
It's a nominal.
I think that it's very nominal.
Yes, it's a nominal fee.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
I'm going to close the discussion with the Fall Belgium Fest is at Stevens Park in Moline, Sunday from twelve to four.
Thank you.
Sadly, I won't be there.
So what is our recommended force of action here, uh, to our council? Mr. Went.
Yeah, I, I'd like staff just to come back with some language regarding, um, trespassing or depositing whatever you delicately, uh, mentioned on, uh, neighboring, uh, property. Uh, and, uh, if, if there's some language regarding noise, um, see what that looks like as well.
Is that clear enough?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
Sorry, one more. Did, did, you said we also needed to do a little bit of change to make sure that our zoning requirements would apply? And that you said that it would, it likely applied, but it was not called out specifically?
Right, exactly. Um, there, there's not a, a, a clear, um, exception from, uh, lo- or accommodation for local zoning, uh, the way that you see in your code for beekeeping or, uh, henkeeping.
So, are you suggesting, Mr. Schmidt, to include some of that language as well?
Yeah, would we need that language, or because of what's in place, we actually wouldn't want to use that language?
Uh, Mayor, if I might, uh, if it, if it's not expressly, like, there's, there's not a real place for it in local zoning, you, you run, uh, up against, um, the, the possi- possibility, uh, that it might be construed as a ban, which, uh, is what we're, uh, the, the city can't ban these, maybe this, this type of use. I think it might be able to fit in, in the, that kind of general agricultural use that, that I, that I referenced. But if, if, um, if, if, if city, the city has, uh, clear thoughts about where this should go as an accessory use, I don't think it's a principal use anywhere. You might want to come out and address that in your zoning ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Went.
But, but is it, doesn't the state law provision say if you've gotten a permit, then, uh, local zoning, uh, does not apply to, uh, pigeons? So basically, as long as you, you get a permit from the city, that, uh, the local zoning ordinance can't, uh, regulate where the pigeons are?
It, it says that zoning regulations relating to restrictions on the location of, um, stables and poultry enclosures do not apply to a pigeon loft for which a permit has been issued. Um, the, for, for the city, the best way to, you, you know, affirmatively regulate these is to, uh, come out and say, um, and what, what zoning ra- regulations do, uh, apply, rather than, uh, what the state laws taking away, uh, the city's authority to, uh, regulate these. The city can regulate through zoning, um, but, but it, it just, um, uh, the, the, the permit will, will, will preempt those, uh, to the, to the extent that, um, uh, you know, that permit, permit's been issued. But you, you can, uh, and many communities do, uh, require setbacks and, and allow them as accessory uses.
So, I see your hand, but what I'm hearing is three ma- three main things that an ordinance you bring back should include, which is a noise regulation, trespassing regulations, um, and zoning clarity, especially in regard to setbacks.
Yeah, but that's different than zoning.
Is that, is that for the loft, construction of the loft structure?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it's really, the principle is the zoning, the clarity on the zoning piece. Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, and I think, I'm not looking to change what we have in place. As you said, our law, we do apply those setbacks and things to the construction of these. But if we need to clarify or specifically call that out or make sure that is clear,
Yeah.
I would want to see those applying in that case. Everything you had said sounded like what we would want, I think.
Okay. So you have those three top items. Anything further? Thank you. Yes, we have consensus of council on that. I see consensus. No one is objecting. Okay. Thank you. So we move to, uh, nine point two, Complete Streets Committee. Mr. Boland.
Yeah, so on, uh, June twenty-eighth, council directed staff to formally codify the Complete Streets Committee. As you all might be familiar, the, uh, around spring twenty-twenty, as far as I could tell, the city's had an informal, uh, uh, staff committee, including, uh, the Director of Engineering, the Director of Public Works, and the Department of, uh, Community and Economic Development. The city adopted a complete streets policy, uh, on April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and that, that authorizing resolution to authorize staff, uh, to complete the implementation and reporting duties that were outlined in that policy. Um, we've been meeting with staff to discuss ways to formally, uh, cod- codify the, uh, that committee. Uh, one way to do that would be to, uh, appoint, uh, staff to a formal staff committee. That's not common, uh, in the, in this, uh, existing city code committees. Uh, there's only a staff traffic committee that has, uh, a limited final decision-making authority over, uh, certain parking sign and barricade matters that has staff on it. Typically, members of city, city staff are not members of committees, um, in, in the city code. Um, oh, one, one reason that may be is because, uh, the Open Meetings Act would apply to this formal committee. And, uh, if, uh, while, while that would make the committee's work transparent, but it would, would also make it more difficult, uh, for staff to discuss the implementation and reporting duties if they were formally appointed to a formal staff committee. Then they would have to, you know, comply, possibly, potentially comply with the notice, agenda, and, and minutes requirements, uh, from the Open Meetings Act, so they wouldn't be able to discuss that internally, uh, those is, complete streets issues like they do now. Um, another possibility would be, uh, a special council, uh, committee, members of city council. There are provisions in the, uh, city code for special, uh, city, city council, uh, committees. And, uh, uh, that, that is, uh, there's some advan- uh, advantages, uh, and disadvantages to that. Uh, some of the concerns we've heard is that elected officials may not have time to serve on a working committee that's really doing a lot of, uh, code review and drafting and standard review and, uh, that, that kind of work. Um, and, and whether, um, you, you know, uh, some alderpersons might feel left out of a, a smaller committee, uh, of the policymaking process. Um, and we've, we've also, the, the other possibility is that the Complete Streets Committee continues as a staff working group, as it does now, we're working under the existing, uh, uh, council direction to complete the implementation and reporting duties in the policy. Um, and I know that we've all, uh, uh, there's a staff, um, memo that was included. I, I don't know if you all have it, uh, from the Director of Engineering. It includes, uh, some of the, that reporting information, uh, that, um, might have been circulated to all of you. Um, and, and I know that, uh, the, uh, the mayor and staff may have o- other thoughts on this. We just want to, uh, look for feedback from all of you, so that the, uh, committee is, uh, implemented in a way that's workable, uh, to, to the committee's work, to update the city's standards and regulations, to actually implement those complete streets goals outlined in the policy. Happy to take your feedback.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boland. Council feedback. Yes, Mr. Went.
I, I think the idea of codifying is that we wouldn't necessarily have to follow what we've done with other committees. Help me understand and make sure, because this is kind of how I envisioned, would be the idea that you would have two aldermen on it, as, and this is kind of how we've run this even informally before, is two aldermen on it, somebody from, uh, Metro Link, uh, somebody from the, uh, the school, somebody from By State, uh, and then one or two people from the, uh, community, uh, are on this, this group. Uh, staff does attend, uh, including, you know, uh, uh, whether it's the Director of Engineering or their designee, or maybe both of them, depending on, on what we're going over. Um, I, I think at our last meeting, we had quite a few more people than we normally had. Uh, but I think that those would be the group that would be, um, uh, no, and, and actual, uh, um, uh, an off, traffic officer, I think was, was always there too. So, uh, the idea that that's what we would have as this working group, which I think, uh, in, as comprised there, it wouldn't be an open meeting, uh, issue as long as you ju- you just had two, uh, aldermen and one of those people from these other organizations. Um, we'd always kind of use that as a working group. Um, and that would be codified. I, I, I think it's important to have that in that there is regular meetings for it and this reporting aspect and everything, because the reporting hasn't necessarily happened. I do appreciate that we did get this, this time, but quite honestly, we met a week ago Friday, and the last time we had met was last April. I mean, and so, uh, this is something that I think is, this council ha- has indicated is a priority. And, uh, by codifying it, it shows that it is a priority and make sure that, uh, this work gets done.
Thank you. Mr. Timmy.
Uh, can, for, for clarity's sake, if by codifying the committee, does that initiate the need for, this is now a, a city committee, therefore it has to abide by OMA?
Mayor, Mayor, if I might,
Yes.
the, a, a public body includes any city subsidiary body, including but not limited to committees and subcommittees, which are supported in whole or in part by tax revenue. Um, the co- codifying it isn't the, you know, isn't the trigger, uh, but it surely makes it look more like a public body than the informal working groups that, uh, have been going on in the past.
Other thoughts? Mr. Waldron.
So, I-
Mr. Waldron's been called on. He has the floor.
You can go next. Thank you, Your Honor. I, I just want to throw my two cents in. Typically, it's rare, if not the first one I'm aware of, other than, uh, years ago in traffic engineering, that we had city and aldermen on a committee. I typically am not in favor of that. I think we should let staff do their job. Anytime in my experience that you put a alderman on a committee, that alderman's influence, one or two, or whoever, moves up in, in importance from the staff themselves. In other words, staff is eager to please, and they're eager to please the aldermen that are in the room. And typically, then you are getting the ideas of two aldermen. You're not getting the ideas of all eight of us. And just reluctantly, I believe, that should be the way we go about this. I think it should be a staff committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. And all of you have had a chance, I hope, to read the attachment that was, you sent it out. Was it Monday or Sunday with three opinions about speaking to that exact item? Mr. Went and then Mr. Timmy.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the reason we did this before was because, quite honestly, there wasn't any accountability with, when it came to streets and those sorts of things. That's why we wound up with Seventeenth Street, where the policy was that there should be a bike path, river to river along the thing. But somewhere along the line, uh, nobody took that into account when working with I-DOT to rebuild Nineteenth. And so, lo and behold, we didn't wind up with a bike path along there. Only begrudgingly after we pushed and pushed and pushed, did we get back a curb on one side of the street, then you got to cross to the other side of the street, and then you got to cross back to the other side of the street. I'm a firm believer that, as it, as it pertains to complete streets, the momentum, um, if not, uh, engaged with aldermen being there, the momentum will be, we're going to do streets the way that we've always done streets. And, um, a, a, a good example is we, uh, just in repairing up on, uh, Avenue of the Cities, uh, when they did at the end of Eighteenth, uh, Street B, B or whatever it was, we just went back and when we tore that whole thing up, we rebuilt the street just as wide as it was before and had back-of-the-curb sidewalks and all that kind of stuff. Those are the sorts of things where I think if, if, um, aldermen who were interested in this issue, we would have actually narrowed the street there, wound up with a boulevard or a terrace, and, um, and made that a more walkable area. Um, we just found out in the, in the last Complete Streets, uh, meeting that even though in the, uh, budget amendments, it says that the redoing of Avenue of the Cities and Sixteenth Street is going to be pushed to twenty-twenty-three, that it actually has been removed from CIP for next, for next year. Things that we probably wouldn't have known or, um, become aware of unless there's people sitting in those meetings, having those conversations. And, um, and I think that that's where you, that, that adds additional accountability to make sure that probably the biggest item that we hear from people is that we want our streets. We want them fixed. We want this to be a walkable city or bikeable city, and all of those things. And that puts some accountability in there.
Mr. Timmy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I've, I've gone w- w- all over the place on this one, and I appreciate Alderman Waldron's perspective. And I agree that having, uh, a, a, a alderman on a, a committee does influence the discussion quite a bit. My vision of a complete street committee is, um, uh, an informal body with the Director of Engineering and the engineering and all the, all the relevant staff with, admittedly, uh, not everyone's from here. And so with community members who can give colorful information about, oh, this is where we cycle. This is where we run. Th- these are where people walk. So that kind of, uh, context is very important. Um, and I think that it, it has helped decide where to put infill locations, where to put bike lanes. I think that's really good, whether that's an alderman or not. Uh, I, I think, um, having said that, I have been thoroughly convinced that, uh, a formal committee could cause more problems than, uh, than solutions. And, and for the OMA being one, uh, just a number of other things. I, I just, I, that's how I sit right now, and, um, I would urge others to, uh, follow suit.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Well, in regards to what council was saying earlier, when I was on the council last time, there were four committees. And one dealt with public utilities, the other one was public works. It used to be a committee system where, and I think it shortened the meeting a little bit, to tell you the truth, because it was all hashed out committee when it got here. It did shorten the meet, and somewhere along the line, that, that all those committees went away. And now we do it all here. And I've, you can make your own decision on that, but I think, uh, I do think when, I mean, if it's all aldermen in the same room, and, you know, you, and usually the aldermen, that whoever's warded is, it's kind of their job to show up to that committee and talk about whatever problems they might be having. Like if the, the people there want a wider sidewalk because their kids walk to school. I mean, I think it's up to the alderman to, to figure that out and have a, i- if you want to make it a formal committee. If these, if these types of things are happening, and, and, you know, the, these things do get away from you. I mean, staff gets it, and it's like a game of telephone, I think. I mean, it gets, uh, it's not their fault. It's just the way it sometimes happens.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
I, um, I think that, I, I think it, part of the problem is I look at our options here, and I don't think any of them are really meeting the objective we want to have. My concern with putting alderman on the committee is for the exact influence question that Alderman Waldron spoke to. I've seen that as I walk into a room, when any of us walk into a room. And I'm, I'm hesitant to hold this to that reality.
to hold this to that reality. And then it, and then it becomes hinged on the place where we have aldermen who are committed to it, and who are committed to reporting back and bringing it through, or else it is just a one person in the room who's educated. But going all the way to a staff working group, I agree, misses on some of that larger community perspective, and bringing that into the focus of conversation, and sort of what we, what we want to capture. Because I think that there's, there's sort of the two components of this, right? There is that staff working group component of how do we implement this, but I wonder if there's a second step or a second piece of this that has to be considered for how we gather that input more appropriately, or what the mechanism is for that. But I just have concerns across the board that any of these are going to be able to cover that off well.
Mr. Vides, can you clarify that some of the examples cited this evening occurred when there was no permanent directorship, or not?
No, there was.
I asked him, thank you.
He wasn't here.
I mean, yes.
He's provided an opinion, and I'm double checking it.
Yeah, no, I think that, you know, if you look at the staff that's here today, none of them were here when this, none of us were here when this policy was adopted, and yet it was the first charge of the ad hoc committee was to prepare the policy itself, and it was shortly thereafter adopted. You know, in '21, you know, there was large absences, I mean, we had some interim directors come and go. This was not on the top of the list. Obviously, there were other big, big ticket items that needed to get done, and they were here for several months at a time, and then there was absences until we got the team on board. So, you know, perhaps if the, if there had not been the turnover, maybe there would have been some, some better follow-up, I don't know. Things got missed. This is not just one of them, there's many things that got missed, you know, and, you know, I want to talk more to, you know, the reporting we do today, too. I mean, we didn't have the strategic plan we have, we didn't have our quarterly reports, we didn't have our status and information reports. I mean, we do a fair amount of reporting, and now we have a report, because I asked the engineer to go ahead, the Director of Engineering, and put this report together so that we at least know, what did we do from '21 until now? You know, did we totally ignore complete streets, or did we really address the issue of the policy? And I think it's fair to say that they, that we have addressed it. Have we addressed it 100%? Probably not. I mean, I can't, I can't sit here and honestly say that. But, you know, one of the other thoughts I'm having, listening to the conversation, is that even if it was an ad hoc committee, which it's been, there's no reason why if we were holding an ad hoc meeting, and we had a project in a specific ward, you know, because there's agendas that we would not reach out to the respective older person of that ward, and advise them that we're having this meeting, we're having this item on the agenda, you know, and invite the older person to actually come and speak to the issues that the community may be thinking about, because you're right, it's a very young staff. They're older, but they're a young staff, right? They're seasoned, but they're a young staff, but they're experts, and I think, and, you know, to give them the opportunity to prove that this policy works, you know, you have to work with us. And I, and I don't think inviting an older person to a meeting is a problem, I think that's, you know, makes sense, it does make sense. It's kind of a, it's a happy medium, I think, you know, because I think that's what we're trying to do as a team here collectively, both the administration, elected bodies, come up with a collective solution. And that might be part of the solution, see how that works. You basically have a policy that you can change at any meeting, if you decide you don't like the policy, you can change it, right? Because that's how policies are written. If it's working, great, if it's not, let's fix it, you know, and then try and work together for the next, you know, year, and see how it goes, because there are so many projects, you know? We might, you know, you might have an alderman show up on one topic, and in that same meeting, we might have another topic, that that affects another ward, because you're right. I mean, I don't know, sometimes I get the streets and the avenues mixed up, you know? Somebody else said that today. That happens. I mean, it just happens, north, south, east, west, I got it figured out now. So, that's just my, that's just my thought, my recommendation, based on what I'm hearing here. You know, I mean, we're ready to do whatever the council wants to do, you know, in order to advance the public agenda here, the public good. And that's what we're trying to do, so, whatever decision is made, we'll adhere to it.
All right, so can I clarify, and then I'll get to you? Mr. Boland, you said your options were either to create this special committee, or continue as the staff working group with some aldermen coming, as they have been doing, and now Mr. Vitas has echoed that option for some period of time, to see how it's working, now that everyone's around the table. Is that how you understand it, the options before us?
Sure. Obviously, you have a traffic staff committee, and you've formally appointed staff to a codified committee in the past, but we have concerns how that would work. But the options have, if the committee's populated by council, which your code already provides, or continue as a working group, and I'll just mention that the policy does encourage the outreach to community members and organizations, and IDOT, and the county where relevant, depending on the project. And that's something that council's already directed staff to do in the policy.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Yeah, just for clarification, those things, the examples I gave were when we were fully staffed, everybody was here, and those projects started before I was even on council, and then moved forward. Another example is, I remember reading in the newspaper where Moline got its first roundabout, and I think Alderman Moeller reached out to me, and it was in his ward at the time, and we had no idea Moline was putting it, it was up in Mullet, and it was just, you know, those are the types of things where we had no idea what was coming down the pipe, and then, because streets, when they're rebuilt, I mean, that's the way that they're going to be for 75 years, unless we get a huge grant where we build Seventh, and then rebuild it differently five years later. But, but for the most part, this changes our built environment for generations, and so that's why this is so important. If we could figure out a way to make this regular, and for us to know, that would be great, but, I mean, even the ad hoc, we went five months without a meeting. And that's with us saying, we want us complete streets, we want this codify, we want this, this is a priority, this is part of our strategic plan, all of those things, and we went five months without meeting. So, my concern is that you, when it comes to the engineering and these things going forward, what was happening, and what will continue to happen, is by the time they get here, they're already engineered, they're already done, and then we make some comments on it, where it's like, well, then the project's not going to happen this year, we're just going to push it off for another year. And that's the kind of stuff that was happening. By getting into the conversation at its infancy, and getting input, then it's engineered in such a way that that's what we're trying to accomplish, and so having those conversations early is critical. Otherwise, like I said, it's too late, and then it's either, well, we're not going to do the project, or it gets pushed an entire year.
Thank you. Anything further from this body? We need to be able to give some more definitive direction, so, well, there wouldn't be a formal vote, I could definitely assess by a show of hands which direction we would want to give. Mr. Went?
Yeah, I mean, if, if the idea of codifying this is troublesome for some, or raises additional issues, I mean, if we want to just continue to do what we have been doing, but with direction from this body that says, hey, we need to meet regularly, we were meeting, what, Alderman Timmy, every, about three weeks?
Three or four weeks, yeah.
Yeah, and that, we continue at that kind of interval, I think that, I mean, we're never short of things to talk about at those meetings, and so it's not like it was being overdone, so, I would like, we can keep the status quo, but with the direction from here that we meet at those three to four week intervals.
Okay. That's an idea coming forward, that seems to be finding a middle ground for us at this time. Can I get some show of hands consensus that that is the direction we want to go? Continue as is, with regular meeting?
With aldermen on it?
As part of a working group, not as part of a codified committee. Yes, Mr. Macias?
My question, thank you. So then, who reports back to us? Is it the aldermen, or?
It's in the policy to be the staff.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Timmy?
Thank you, Your Honor, I'll try to be quick. The influence of the alderman on the committee is something I had not considered before, and I'm taking it very seriously. I view my participation as an avid cyclist, and someone who rides the roads and knows them. I honestly had not considered that part of it, and I'm questioning, I'm not an engineer. I'm questioning the, my particular role, even on a working group like that, because I don't want to exert undue influence. And so, I'm asking for feedback from the council on that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Timmy, and I open it up to your colleagues. I will say, when we call this a working group, in the way that it has been functioning, it is not far off of the mayoral working groups that I've put together to work with staff. Typically, of course, because of OMA, I only have one other person on the council with me for those. So I don't find it personally unusual that we would have a working group like this, the way that it's been. Mr. Went?
Yeah, and being in those meetings, I don't think that you push things one way or another, I think that your input is very good. I come from it from a planning background of, and taking transportation courses, and looking at things not from necessarily an engineer, the traditional, streets are only to move cars as fast as they can from one side of town to the other, but a complete streets approach that we want to not only do that, but also make it safe, so that somebody could actually walk up to Whitey's and get an ice cream cone without being scared that they're going to get hit at Sixteenth Street. And so, and I think that I have tried to, when the Morgan Park thing came up, I met with Alderman Macias, and we talked about ideas, and he brought up a couple of things that changed what I was recommending, and I think we've come up with his ideas, what we're kind of like looking at moving forward. And so, those are the types of things where, I think being on it and having those conversations early, because I don't, I honestly think that if we wouldn't have had those, the, what we'd end up in Morgan Park would have been very different, and some of the issues you had brought up may have materialized and been issues. So that's why it's important to do it this way.
So we'll, what I'm hearing is, keep it as is, with regular meetings and regular reporting, we have multiple mechanisms for that reporting, that administration can work with the heads of our staff on, whether it's the status, regular status and information we get every month, or some other specialized report straight to the council. You know, there will be transparency and regularity with that plan. Are we in consensus on that mode of action? I'm seeing heads nodding yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Because one thing in addition to that is, I think we've brought up a lot of good thoughts on this process tonight, and I think there's a reason it still belongs as part of our long-term goals, and keeping this as more top of mind. I think we, by returning to kind of that initial proposal, we can see how that goes before we make the step forward to say, how do we codify, not codify, or adjust this to the future? Because I think we do need both parts, we need staff to have the freedom to do their work, and we need to have a public input mechanism, to which I think the aldermen are providing that now, and is the right way to do that. But I think if, and especially thinking to our goal, the goal of codification kind of goes on hold, and then we can reassess, after we've seen it working up and running again, and say, okay, is there a way we need to revisit that, or potentially put that as a topic of a roundtable in the future.
All right, we'll reassess in future. Thank you, Mr. Boland, I think you understand the direction we're headed, and administration, you understand as well.
Yes, I do.
I have one last comment.
Thank you all.
Are you sure?
Oh, yeah. You know I can't let things go.
Mr. Waldron?
One thing I would like to current, even though I don't agree with consensus, I think that's pretty clear, one thing I'd like that committee to consider is the traffic engineering model. It has worked, it's been working since I was back in the city, it produces an agenda, where all can see that agenda, we can all see if there's something on the ward. When it's required to happen every month, there's an agenda, you can see if it's happening, you go to the meeting, you make your appointments clear, it is a good, good mechanism. All those items used to come to council directly, and we were here till 11 o'clock at night, that committee has taken up its work, does it monthly, I just think that's a better model. And I wish the consensus would consider that.
Would you like a more formal consensus to know, now that you're speaking out on that line, you know, where we're really at here with the seven?
Oh, no, I, I was the only one shaking my head, so I know where we're at.
Mr. Went?
I don't disagree with you. I mean, like, I, you know, I'd rather as much sunshine as possible, as much reporting, as much, so, I don't disagree. I would like to see that people know what's, what we're planning on spending money on with streets and those sorts of things, and be able to show up and listen, and if they wind up, I mean, we know that not everybody is diligent as you are, but that people like look at, look at the agenda and say, oh, my street, or the street up the ways for me is on that agenda, I'm going to show up, and I'm going to give my input. And I think that that would be a good thing for our residents, you know, the ones that sit here, or people who aren't delighted. So I agree with you, I mean, if I could wave a magic wand, I think I would prefer that as well, but, you know, if the issue with staff is, I mean, there seem to be some complaints that if we did that, that that'd be overly burdensome, so.
So I'm seeing more of a four-three split among the council. Please correct me if I'm wrong, based on head nodding to comments.
Take a show of hands.
Yeah, can we have a show of hands for continuing the course, the way we described it, with regular reporting, regular meetings, and reassessing in the future as a staff working group? One, two, three, four, five?
I mean, I'm fine with that, but.
Okay, but you were saying that you also would understand that.
No, but, but by preference would be that, that it, I'd like the same thing, but that it be published of what we're doing.
So, is there anyone else besides you two that have that preference? Okay, seeing none, then.
Is the idea that we don't, we think that it's too cumbersome to publish what we're doing, or is it that?
It's all of the things that are put in the recommendations from staff and myself, is what I've heard echoed tonight.
But I don't think the staff report properly addressed whether we would do it, similar to the staff traffic committee. I do think that's a structure we probably would be want to revisit. I think that has some merit of getting the balance between the staff group with a more in-minded participation.
That is why I reminded this council that the administrator has instituted a regular monthly status and information report, which in this kind of setup of a working group, is a formal reporting mechanism. So, we're going to need to move, move to another topic, it sounds like we're wrapping this up.
So you're saying that complete streets would then be included in with his report?
It's one option I mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, you know, as I look at those reports, I mean, we speak very clearly to all the projects going on, I mean, there's a briefing there for you, that's what it's meant to be, is a brief, it's meant to get you to say, oh, that's something I want to follow up on, oh, I need to go to a meeting, or, you know, you might have a suggestion that you want to toss back to staff, you know, and it doesn't always have to happen at the council meeting, because we're here all the time anyhow. But as we bring those projects forward, and then you can see that list that went out, there's a lot of work going on through engineering, and they are the lead agency, they are truly the lead agency, it's not CED, it's not Public Works, it is the Director of Engineering's job, you know, and I would envision, as we do our quarterly reporting, that if there are projects that are street-related, and are being reported in the status information report, that should suffice to keep the public informed, because we post those on the website. I mean, that information is all posted, so if there's an interest by a citizen about any streets, they can find it there.
But is pre-engineering, I mean, that's not.
Pre-engineering, what's pre-engineering?
Published?
We're just looking for a formal mechanism to report what's going on in this working group.
I mean, we take notes of the meeting, we're not formally minutes.
I mean, we take notes of the meeting. They're not four minutes. We certainly provide those or somebody that would discuss. I don't have a problem reviewing Public Works projects with the committee or having them review or missing sidewalk links.
Yeah.
Yeah. The whole point of the option that we have so far given direction to Mr. Boland regarding was staying the course, but making sure the meetings are regular, the reporting is regular, and that we do reassess down the road. So I don't want the council to forget that. We have, those are the things we've said, I've tried to repeat several times, and I think that we're going to need to move to our other agenda items now if we have enough clarity for Mr. Boland and our administrators. Thank you. Nine point three, two-hour parking in City Lot behind Highland Building. Mr. Dryer, please come to the podium.
I believe it was Alder Timian that asked that the issue be revisited, as he had been contacted by some property owners there at Avenue of the Cities and Thirty First Street. Some time ago in the past, parking was removed from Avenue of the Cities so that the sidewalk could be wide, and a municipal parking lot was installed to the rear of the building, which holds about, the parking lot holds about fifteen, sixteen spaces. Currently, it's not time-restricted parking. There's a residential apartment complex there at the corner of Thirty First and Avenue of the Cities above the sneaker store, the karate shop. There's a Realtor agency there. The karate operation runs at night, so there's shortage of parking in the evening when the residents are at home. The item was reviewed by the Traffic Engineering Committee and staff and Police Department, who had some issues about enforcing a two-hour parking restriction, recommended that it remain as it is in the status quo. Staff reviewed the original language with the project, and it said it was just to be public parking, so it didn't identify that it was to be restricted or modified so that it was more available for the business parking. So that was the recommendation. Staff certainly, you know, discussed the idea. I don't think anybody would have significant issues related with making it two-hour parking, but it will be an enforcement issue for MPD. So that's, you know, there's some parking there. On the backside of the businesses, that is for their parking, but it's not significant. The apartment complex has a small amount of parking as well, but the municipal parking is a much more organized and attractive parking facility, I would add.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I was contacted by the business owner, and when viewing the historical narrative that we took away their parking, so we gave the businesses parking, but now they can't use the parking because residents are using the parking. So the city now is paying for residential parking for an apartment complex, and I don't think that was the intention. The argument, obviously, municipal is municipal, and I get that. The business owners have, the one in particular has said they cannot continue to do business in this manner. They used to be able to park down at the old Dollar Store down the block, but the new business owner isn't allowing that. So the parents and students are not able to park there, especially in the wintertime. It is too far to walk for people. So I definitely think, as a member of the council who wants to think about businesses and not discourage business growth on the avenue, especially for the business has been there for, what, twenty-five plus years? I'm definitely in favor of two-hour parking up until, I don't know, nine o'clock, and then not worrying about enforcement, you know, afterwards.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. But before we get into that, the, could we go back and look at our minutes and where we left things? We had had an issue with the dress shop, that part of that was on right-of-way, and some of it was private. And I, I guess at the time, we had directed staff to work out an agreement where there was a certain number of the slots were going to be dedicated to them, and then there was a certain number that were going to be for public use. Is that not the case?
I believe that is the case that I recall in this discussion.
Sounds familiar.
They have separated it, but for whatever reason.
If I may, I do, I spoke with Joe about this a few months back, and the right-of-way splits the parking spots horizontally. And so the front half is theirs, and the back half is the city's. And we could, you know, just run a curb through it if we wanted to and add horizontal parking, but that's not really being good partners. But I don't think any agreement was ever.
Well, because we talked about that at council, all of those things, and said, hey, you know, if we're trying to serve the area and everything, that we can do this, maximize the amount of parking. They can have some, and we can have some, and we'd work it out. The other option would be, because the right-of-way is so deep there, you're exactly right, that we could at least get, I think, I can't remember what it was, like four or five, parallel park along that, and at least get something there. And so that was what we had come up with. Staff was going to go and talk with that property owner. I may even have their phone number someplace because he called me a couple of times. Dick Potter, I think, dealt with them more than I did. But we need to go back and look because I, my guess is, nobody ever inked that deal, and that's why we're still having issues. So that may help alleviate some of this. But to the other point, when this slot was originally created, that apartment building was not habitable. You know, and so what has happened is, the taxpayers are basically just subsidized a development. Now, you can say however you want, but typically in those situations, be like, okay, we're going to make this work. Maybe you can have overnight parking for your people, some kind of development agreement, but we really need these businesses along here to work because you're absolutely right. Again, this is an example. If complete streets was around when we redid Avenue of the Cities, it would never look the way that it looks right now. I mean, it is, it's the worst of all worlds. You can't, there's no parking, and it's not really safe to walk. And so that, this was the compromise. In fact, I think, I don't know who owned that house, but they tore a house down and then put that up there. So I think that to honor what the intent was, you know, two-hour parking. Now, logistically, if you go till nine o'clock, that actually means that seven o'clock, a resident can park there. And, you know, and I'm not sure if that saves the, the business that's doing evening classes, but it is something to take into consideration. So I'm not sure if nine to nine is exactly right, but we need to do something. And this had been brought up, like I said, a couple of years ago, but nothing happened.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I am in favor of moving forward with helping, having this lot support businesses and as opposed to residential parking primarily. I would be curious, obviously with us not having in place our downtown parking enforcement, because we've not seen that need, we don't have that contractor in place. We'd be relying on the Police Department, I assume. What, I'm curious to hear just how much of a challenge that would be. I guess I'd like the department perspective. Knowing, of course, that you're not going to be in that lot every minute of every day enforcing it.
Can you come to the mic, please? Thank you, Macias.
I'll be honest, the chief gave me a thirty-second brief overview that this may come up. I know that he said that he has had discussions. It would be taxing, he believes, on the Police Department for oversight of that, and I believe that he even suggested hiring an outside entity for the enforcement of it. I know that he has had that discussions with Bob, I believe, maybe he's had that discussions with you. And so that was his message briefly, like I said, a thirty-second overview with that.
He doesn't want the Police Department frankly doing parking enforcement, either for a perm or do it or some other company because they have other matters, more important issues they want to deal with. So.
Mr. Macias?
Could there be unintended consequences that people now start parking along that other street and taking up the spots of the people that live in front of those houses? I mean, and it's a kind of a narrow street, too, so I could just see even more problems that we don't anticipate.
That was one of the, I'm sorry, Your Honor. That was one of the, in that report it was mentioned. They were afraid there would be overflow in the residential area. There is, due to the width, parking's only permitted on one side of those roads currently.
And, and there's no sidewalk on either side of that street either.
Not on that one.
Mr. Went.
To that point, and I think that that's a valid concern, that it may be something where maybe we want staff to look at this, and it may be a thing where we wind up splitting the baby, where we contract with the building owner and say, hey, you can lease X amount of spots for, you know, and they will be tagged for that, and they pay for it, and then the remaining spots are open at two-hour intervals or something like that. And so that may be it. With the perm, I mean, my guess is that it would be complaint-based and it will be difficult, but you hope that most people, well, it's two hours, okay, I'm not going to go over that, or I'll get back and try to be cognizant of it because that might get a difference.
So I hear two solutions that have come to the floor so far. The potential hiring out of someone to do parking enforcement, and the other to potentially lease spots to the landlord. So it sounds to me more like what we might be coming to is, at the very least, having the administrators find a solution.
Permit parking.
Permit parking or find a solution to this issue because we're not doing either side of the service. Is there anything else in directions to staff that is necessary at this time? Mr. Went.
I think we're doing a Avenue of the Cities engineering study, and I still believe that along this stretch, part of that engineering study should be whether a road diet's possible, whether, as Alderman Timian and I have talked about, whether it's moving the curb, or whatever we need to do to, whether it's bringing back some on-street parking or how to work through that area. I mean, one thought which would change the complexion a little bit, especially right there, would be to take out that stoplight at Thirty First, and then you could do a one-lane in a direction, a turn in the middle, and basically from Twenty Seventh to Thirty Fourth, there'd just be a straight shot, no stops, and just go. And then you'd pan out at Thirty First and, or Thirty Fourth and go from there. And then you could actually have some parking along that, that area, and maybe breathe some life back into that strip of Avenue of the Cities because, I mean, they need help, and I know all of us have talked about trying to do something up on Avenue of the Cities, but nothing we've done is going to move the needle unless you make some kind of change.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Just one, if we are looking at a solution that involves reviewing, or going to an outside firm, which I totally understand how that makes sense. It might be time to take the pulse of the downtown to ensure that leaving our parking unenforces it currently is appropriate. We've all, I think we've all said that if we need it to help with the turnover and help the businesses downtown, that would be when we would go back to that. If we're already having a conversation, I think we should double-check that before we sign a contract where we could bring back a different size of one.
Sure.
Thank you. So I have one other question, but maybe not for you. To the council, then putting a pause on the request for the two-hour parking while we wait for a solution. That is our understanding.
Yeah, I think going forward, I mean, you've got the karate school, the Realtor's office, the apartment complex owner, is the dress shop there, too?
Yeah.
Dress shop, anything else? Are we missing anybody?
There's a barber, there's a Realtor.
So maybe what we do is we'll just get this whole group together. We'll get them all together, we'll sit down, and we'll do some brainstorming and see what kind of solutions that we can work out, and then bring back some options. You know, if there's any costs associated, we'll bring those costs back to you as well.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Mr. Went.
I got a quick question for Mr. Dryer. As I was looking through some of these traffic things, over on Seventh and Eighteenth, the flashing, we had made a recommendation to do flashing lights, and then I think it got overruled, and there was some traffic study that was wound up being done. But now we're back to the flashing lights. Is that what's happening, and when is that going to happen? That's an old town in the middle of Old Town.
Yeah, that's, that's an intersection. There was discussion about that, removing the signal. The city hired a consultant to review whether it met the criteria for needing traffic signalization. The firm found that it didn't require signals, and they made a recommendation to operate the intersection with Seventh Street being free flow and Eighteenth being, you know, as if it was a stop sign. And staff reviewed it, and we didn't like that arrangement in particular, given the site distance constraints provided by the parking on Seventh Street. So we were recommending instead that it operate as an all-way stop. The consultant modeled it, and the intersection would operate reasonably well under that configuration, and there was no concerns with it backing up into, towards Nineteenth Street in any significant detail, if I recall. I discussed the intersection with Alder Williams, as it's in his district, and he was making contact with some of the property owners and neighborhood residents in the area. And so I've been receiving some emails from folks voicing their opinions as to whether it's to proceed or not. So we need to discuss based on input that we would tally up and then bring it to the council in some form. I don't know if it's one of your working sessions or not, and decide whether we leave it so or convert it to all-way stop and put the signal on all-way flashing red or all the council wishes.
Thank you, Mr. Dryer. I'll say, council, if you have more specific questions, please reach out to Mr. Dryer separately so we can stick to our agenda items, which you can't go very far because you're up for nine point four. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-five capital improvement plan.
Yep, and, and Your Honor, before.
Oh, who are we starting with? Carol?
Carol, can I have some opening remarks?
Thank you.
Before David dives into the PowerPoint, very brief remarks. I wanted to give council reassurance that all the projects that are in front of you that have been added in for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five are budgeted within the proposed budget, and revenues have been identified or proposed to pay for those projects. When I say proposed with potential some fee increases. We have budgeted a total over the three years of fifty-eight point one million dollars across all three years, so a very aggressive capital improvement program. That's nearly twenty million dollars a year. Of that amount, six point nine million dollars is being paid through ARPA, or about twelve percent of those funds. The plan in front of you does continue annual funding for the parks, infrastructure projects that we started here a couple of years ago. And then I wanted to make sure everyone knew that for WPC, there is no fee increase proposed for the project shown in front of you for twenty-three through twenty-five. And a separate discussion will be coming forward to you on the twentieth, where we will be showing some fee increases that will be needed for South Slope and related. The same goes for water. There are no fee increases in the projects for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. On the twentieth, when we come back with user fees, if the council would choose to consider a fee increase for water in the future, potentially out in twenty twenty-five, we might be able to add some projects almost to the tune of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if the council would consider. um, we might be able to add some projects almost to the tune of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if the council would, would, um, consider raising fees. And I, in water, I wanted to make a little note, um, there've been some changes in priorities and you might see that the total projects in water have been slightly reduced and it's because of the cybersecurity, that item, part of it is on the agenda for tonight. Um, as well as the rehab of the Seventh Street water tank for twenty-five. And then as we jump to stormwater, that's actually a different story. As you know, the cash balances in stormwater has been very low, the projects have been, um, decreasing as a result. And for twenty twenty-two, we only have two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in net available for projects without drawing down the fund balance. We have not raised fees in stormwater since two thousand and five. So the projects in front of you for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five do propose some fee increases to pay for part of those projects. And over the three-year period of fee increases, it would equate as proposed to pay for these projects, an increase of two dollars and fifty-nine cents a month uh, per resident, but again, that's over a three-year period of gradual increases. That would generate in the third year, almost eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, um, of projects ongoing. And we're gonna be having a lot more discussions on that as well as on the twentieth.
So just to clarify, you're saying, um, over the course of three years, the fee would increase up to two dollars and fifty-nine cents per month?
Per month, so less than a dollar, less than a dollar, less than a dollar, less than a dollar.
Got it. Okay.
And then lastly, and we'll let David, um, take over here. You may have noticed in the, um, materials that were handed out on your very first page that we have not allocated one point five million dollars in home rule tax annually. It's highlighted in red at the bottom of that first page and you'll see it accumulating over the three-year period. What that is, is in twenty-three, we've got one and a half million dollars of debt dropping off, which is paid through home rule sales tax. And Bob, Barry and I are going to be coming back to council on the twenty-seventh of September. It's on the new updated budget schedule. And for that meeting, we would like to discuss with council major capital projects that are not CIP and we'd like council to consider potentially issuing bonds again to leverage that one point five million in home rule sales tax to stretch our dollars out to accomplish some large projects that, um, council has been talking about. So just so you know that that's upcoming.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dreyer.
Yes.
Thank you. So, uh, between Tony and I, we've got about, uh, sixty PowerPoint slides to go over and I figure if we spend two minutes on each one, I'll get you out of here by nine-thirty, so.
That's the wrong number.
So I'm being sarcastic. I'm going to go over it pretty quickly and I don't know if you wanna take questions as we go or, or not, so. Let's figure if I can figure this out. So this is our maintenance budget for, uh, twenty twenty-three. It basically shows our primary areas of consideration from pavement markings, uh, joint ceiling, uh, asphalt overlays, traffic safety, uh, inlet replacements, uh, patching programs, the things that we do annually to maintain the streets, uh, within the city. Then we have some, uh, miscellaneous projects, projects designed and inspections and temporary technical assistance. Uh, this slide just kind of zooms in on that previous table to show you the amounts. So we spend annually about two hundred and fifty thousand on pavement markings, seventy-five thousand on joint ceiling, asphalt overlay four hundred, the, the large dollar amount is, is patching the pavements at one point three nine five million dollars for a total of about two point five eight million dollars annually. And this slide here is just the percentage breakdown of how those maintenance dollars are spent. Fifty-four percent, uh, again, just dealing with the pavement patching. Uh, and it shows your, your percentages just to see where that money is being spent. Yes, sir.
Yeah, on there, you, you talked about the, uh, the analysis program or what, on the, on the slide before. Um, to be determined using pay, maintenance software and is that off of the analysis that?
Yeah, the IMS is doing, they're just about done, we have a meeting coming up, uh, this week with the last phase of their work. So they're, they're supposed to be putting together kind of a model of how we should be spending maintenance dollars to stay at certain uh, pavement condition ratings.
So would that be then the, the patching and, and that's will determine where those things are?
They should, they should, yes. Help us.
Then will there be a separate analysis on which streets?
It's resurfacing, reconstructions as well, it should highlight those as being streets we should hit and target, yes.
So will, but will those not be for neck, I mean, cause we've got an engineer, you know, is that, will that win?
So yeah, it may take some time to get through the pipe, but it should show us where we should start focusing. Yeah. So this is just a quick photo of the maintenance, the things that the crew's doing at the city funds, pavement marking, crack ceiling, uh, you know, rapid retainer, flashing beacons. This slide I just put in there just to show how maintenance program spending is, uh, split from previous years. So essentially it shows that in, uh, this twenty-three, we have projected a, a doubling of the, uh, overlay program, the asphalt cement overlay jumping up to four hundred thousand dollars. That's because of some, uh, resurfacing projects that we have pending on Seventh Street and Avenue of the Cities. Uh, this is a table I tried to show that lists all of our, our projects in stormwater and water project sidewalk projects in the city. And that total is about seventeen point four million dollars for those projects. Then combined with the maintenance, uh, items, it's a total budget of twenty, approximately twenty million dollars. And we'll go over those projects for the most part, uh, in the next slides real quick to show you what streets and things that are projected. Uh, so, but looking at the, you know, alley reconstruction, resurfacing projects, this is a percentage breakdown. I don't know if my eyes are getting bad, I can't read that, I don't, hopefully you can, but it uh, basically shows how much is spent on water projects, how much is spent on, uh, bicycle projects, uh, about thirty-one percent of, of the funding there on that, reconstructions nine percent, resurfacing's nine percent, alley reconstruction two percent, uh, transfer to parks two percent, just to give you an idea of where those projects' funds are being spent. So for our twenty-three projects, these are the, the alleys that were identified, uh, for reconstruction. Uh, the alley between Eleventh and Twelfth Street and Thirteen and Fourteenth. It was always new to me that, that we identified the alleys by the streets that bound them. Hundred and forty-four thousand, uh, dollars for that alley there to the south, ten, between Tenth and Eleventh Streets and Eighteenth to Eighteenth Avenue A is an alley slated for reconstruction. This is the resurfacing project that I noted earlier, this is an important project, Seventh, uh, Seventh Street is a, a critical street in the city system. Uh, it's, uh, federally funded eighty percent. And so, you know, this is a project that we have budgeted for five hundred sixty-two thousand, uh, for about a quarter of a mile. Yes, sir.
Will there be, uh, any, or is this just curb to curb?
Resurfacing, yeah, there's no, we aren't reconstructing, we aren't doing any underground work. Uh, so it's, it's not an opportunity to move curbs or, you know, change capacity or things, it's a strict resurfacing.
Okay, cause on the east side of that, there's no sidewalk or, or anything. And there had been discussion at some point about putting a bike path, an off-street bike path down that, that stretch.
That would, would increase the cost, we'd have, we'd have to look at that. I suppose that's something that the council wants to, to tackle, we could take a look at. I don't know if Laura, do you know, is there space there for sidewalk on one side? Laura is on the phone, hopefully she isn't.
Yeah, where the ravine is, that's all fill, that, that would be tough from Butterworth Center, south.
We do have the sidewalk across the street.
Yeah, it is a full sidewalk across the street.
It sounds like something to apply the complete streets policy to as you're discussing.
Well, again, these are resurfacings and they're, you know, if, if every street is a reconstruction, then, then your costs and design are, are changed accordingly. It's just simply just a mill, a mill and relay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, two more resurfacing projects, this is one for Avenue of the Cities from Thirty-Fourth to Forty-first Street and Nineteenth Avenue from Thirty-Fifth to Thirty-Sixth Street. Uh, the, again, these are all federally funded projects at the IDOT specifications. Uh, there's some drainage issues on the Nineteenth Avenue, uh, segment. Just, uh, again, a mill and, and relay.
We have a question over here, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, what is the timing of these projects? And, and I ask because that is how everyone gets to school, to Moline High School and Roosevelt right there.
Oh, absolutely.
And Nineteenth, by the way, some of those are happening at the same time, that's the way most people avoid Avenue of the Cities too.
I mean, good thing that the stuff on the other side of the high school is being done now because the traffic really has amped up in the neighborhoods surrounding Roosevelt and the high school. So just, please keep that in mind as you plan these out, that this is a huge corridor for
Construction phase.
School traffic.
Okay.
Washington Elementary, Roosevelt Elementary, the high school and Wilson, for sure.
And is Twenty-Sixth gonna be completely done this year or is?
I've heard, I've heard the end of November.
That's what was in our report with status and information.
But, but is there, was it put into two, so there's gonna be some next year as well?
No, their goal is to get it done this year.
Okay.
Thank you, please continue.
All right.
I know you asked the question.
Uh, two more resurfacing projects, this is, uh, Fifteenth Avenue from Thirty-Nine to Forty-first and then another segment, uh, a little further away from Thirty-second to Thirty-third Street. Again, these are based on, you know, the pavement condition and drainage ish, issues. Uh, and then, you know, get the new pedestrian ramps at the corners there. Uh, smaller projects per se, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and ten thousand each. Here's a reconstruction project, uh, just north of Avenue of the Cities over by Goodwill and Arby's, it's Twenty-second Avenue. Pavement's in just very poor condition and, and we want to, uh, tackle that project for about six hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, next project is a reconstruction project, this is Forty-Fifth Street from Twenty-Sixth Street to the end, uh, down there near the nursery. Uh, that's a, a true seal coat street that we'll wanna be, uh, upgrading. So that project is point one nine miles for eight hundred and sixty thousand. And we got our bicycle-related projects, this is, uh, river-to-river phase one construction, uh, next year for three point five seven million dollars. And then starting the phase two, uh, design with, uh, engineering consulting firm for the, the next piece of that project.
Mr. One.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, back one slide, is, is Forty-seventh being done this year or did that get?
That got pushed and assuming that we can get that one done, then this one would start. We've, we're pretty much anticipating that, uh, it's going to get done and then this project will be able to proceed.
So they'll both get?
Done next year, but they won't be going simultaneously.
Okay. And then for, for that one, we're applying for?
The ITEP grant, yes.
The ITEP grant, but we have to pay, the engineering has to be done upfront or is that not part of the?
I'm not sure off the top of my head if it needs to be shovel-ready or not, I suspect it doesn't need to be shovel-ready, but I'd have to check.
So, I mean, do we then, I mean, if there's a eighty-twenty match or whatever, then do we lose that? Or would they reimburse us for eighty percent of the engineering if we've already done it?
If, well, you have to be careful on some of those, if they, if they can fund it, they don't want you to have started it until the funding is, you know, agreed upon. So if you do work pre-project, you can lose that funding.
So, so we're, we are working, I, I guess I'm trying to understand.
I think we're, I, Laura's been handling, I think that, that she's got a pretty good handle on it and that we should be good with respect to that. So that, that may be part of our match then. I'd have to check with her, honestly.
Could you, could you let us?
I will do that.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I can speak to that if you want me to.
Sure, go ahead. So that's the phase two, two hundred thousand dollars.
Right, and that is in addition to the amount we had budgeted in twenty-two, which I can't remember off the top of my head. Um, and we are in the process of hiring an engineer now to begin that engineering. Um, the engineering does not need to be complete in order to apply for the ITEP, but the more you have done, the better. So that's why we're starting now, we're gonna tell IDOT in our application that we have started the engineering process. Um, that'll make us, make our application look a little better.
Thank you, please continue, Mr. Dreyer.
Welcome.
Oh.
Did you get, did you get clarification from IDOT on the rebuild on how far north that goes and what they're? Cause you guys were meeting with IDOT.
About the?
About Twenty-Seventh? Yeah.
We did meet with them.
Cause I think Hinton years ago said that, that they were gonna reconstruct all the way up to, to where it meets the, the on-ramp for the, uh, or the off-ramp for Twenty-third Avenue because they own all of it.
They're not, I don't believe they're going that far with this project that we had a meeting with a few days ago.
Well, no, but, but eventually, because they wanna get it off their books and give it to us.
Yes, they do wanna do a jurisdictional transfer, they did mess, mess and mention that again.
But we don't know when they're gonna do that second half of it?
I don't know, correct. I don't know when they're gonna do it. Road diets, the, the, those will, you know, we just put a place marker in and we'll identify a projects, uh, working with the Complete Streets Group and, and going forward with that. Uh, bicycle project, the Thirty-Sixth Avenue, uh, project, uh, about a half a mile project for eight hundred and nine thousand, providing a, a bike facility on the south side of the street there. And, uh, and then we needed to follow through on that and see if we can get you a little further east to where it could get into the south, yeah. Uh, keep going through these pretty quickly. Uh, there's money in the budget for five hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, multimodal transportation plan. Forgot to put the dollar amount on that one. Uh, then there's this, the Thirty-Sixth Street, Sixth to Eighth Avenue, uh, closure of that street and essentially I'll leave it open for bicycle and ped traffic to, to circulate back and forth. That was planned to be done, uh, this year, but there was some comments that, you know, neighborhood input that the elder had heard and, and we had received, so we kinda put it on the, uh, back burner for now, but it's a project that we'd like to, to still do. I know there's been some contact from a gentleman recently wanting to close that street as well. Uh, here's a signal rebuild project at the library and, uh, Forty-first Street at Thirty-second Avenue for three hundred thousand dollars. It's a very old intersection that equipment's thirty-five years old and needs to be replaced.
David, are, are you considering a left-turn signal in and out of the library?
That's one of, one of the, into the library.
Into it.
It's one of the, uh, requests that people have made, so you're aware, aware of that too. And then the intersection here at Nineteenth and Seventh Street is another old signal that, uh, needs to be rebuilt, uh, end of life, our electrician has frequent, uh, malfunctions there. Engineering services for twenty twenty-three, the Seventh Avenue, uh, reconstruction design from Twelfth to Twenty-third is in there for seven hundred and fifty thousand. The Arsenal Bridge Deck Design at five hundred thousand dollars. River Drive Improvement, seventy-five thousand dollars, that's for, uh, a signal planned at, uh, Twelfth Street and River Drive at the, uh, old tax layer facility. Uh, twenty twenty-four design projects, three hundred and fifty, uh, Quiet Zone Design and Construction Matches, two point seven five million, it's shown in our table as combined, so I put it in there to show it to you. And River-to-River Phase Two Design, two hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. One.
For the, uh, the Bridge Deck Design, I, I, I know that we had the, the conversation that we were gonna apply for the, the grant this year, but that. we were gonna apply for the, the grant this year, but that didn't happen, so we're applying for it for next year.
For next year.
Yeah.
But it was my understanding that the engineering and all that stuff was part of that grant. I mean, are we spending five hundred thousand dollars in advance of then applying for this? I mean, it's same thing. I mean, i- if it's something that gives us extra points, then, okay, but if it's, we're throwing money at it in advance, and, and quite honestly, I think, if, if we're going to be doing that, we should probably be asking the Arsenal to chip in as well. I mean, this is really for their benefit, because otherwise we wind up getting into the situation, we, we keep spending, keep spending, then all of a sudden we spent six million dollars to, to do this thing and never got a grant and, and?
And never got a grant.
Well, and, and got like five, five road reconstructions that didn't get hap, get done in the way.
Yeah, I can speak to the DCIP grant. That actually was postponed until twenty twenty-three. So the Roosevelt Group is, as well as the new Garrison Commander who we've met and spoken with, are well aware that we're going to be pursuing that. And, and there was discussion with respect to the deck replacement relative to the, the core mission, because it's all mission-driven. The greater the mission value there is, the greater the opportunity to get the grant. And they see this as a really good opportunity for the Arsenal, from what we're hearing. David, you were on the phone for over an hour with the folks in the Roosevelt Group, so.
There, there are two, there are two grant programs that we were considering for this one. There's an FHWA, FHWA Bridge Improvement Grant, or the BIP, which is an eighty-twenty program that the bridge meets the criteria for. And then there's the DCIP. The DCIP requires the, the bridge to be shovel-ready, ready for construction within twelve months after award of the grant. The Roosevelt Group people think packaging, the bridge decking with the pedestrian loop ramp down from the Viaduct Bridge is a, is a win-win project for the base and the city. And it's a project that we'd like to see, we'd like to see the pedestrian loop ramp and the deck get repaired. Again, it just depends on what program has the best chance of luck and costs the city the least amount of, of money. So we're still trying to hammer that out. What this is reflecting there is that, is if we just went with the FHWA BIP Grant, Bridge Improvement Program Grant. So, but that's something that we have to work out with, with the administration on exactly how do we proceed with what's this one. There's also an issue, too, with the use of federal land in the project, and the pedestrian loop ramp touches down on federal property. So we need to identify exactly where that is and who owns what, and whether the Defense Department can kind of overlook it or make some special consideration for that particular project, given that it's outside of their defenses, as they refer to it.
Thank you.
I mean, obviously, we've talked about this, and, and we wanna be good partners with the Arsenal and make this work, but I, I, I have some reservations of the residents of Moline subsidizing a hundred percent of this. I mean, I, it's different if it's an eighty-twenty match and, you know, the feds are giving eighty percent of it, eh, okay, but, but I, I'd like to really better understand why Moline's footing a hundred percent of, of this, and have that conversation with the Arsenal of.
We'll bring it, we'll bring back information on this. There's a lot of moving parts, and we will bring information back. It's a complex project.
Thank you. Next.
So this is just an overview map of almost the entire city, just showing those projects that we just went over. And here's some water projects that, go back?
Can you go back to that map?
Sure.
So, and I mentioned this a little bit earlier. I have some real concerns that we had a project in twenty twenty-two, which was the reconstruction of Avenue of the Cities and Sixteenth Street. We've all been going to a Moline football game, or been up there for Whiteys, or Country Style, or whatever, and we know that the swoop curve there and the way that that is designed is treacherous. I've got constituents, and I know Alderman and Mrs. Hughes does too, that there are people who live three, four blocks away and want to go get ice cream with their kids, and they have to drive there because it is not safe to walk across that area. It's, it was within our Avenue of the Cities plan for that to be redesigned. We passed it through council that it was on the, in the budget. We have spent money on traffic studies and, and started the engineering, or some of the, that, that process. We, I have talked with those business owners around there, saying this is part of our budget and, and everything, and now it has just disappeared. It's, it's still in the budget amendments that we're gonna be voting on later, where it says that it's pushed to twenty twenty-three, but it is not on the plan. So I, I guess I'm having a hard time when something is voted on by the council, has been budgeted and put through. Wouldn't the council have to vote to remove it? Or is that, because, because my concern is, I mean, if, if we weren't paying attention, we, oh, yeah, we're moving forward, and, and that's fine with no heads up, oh, yeah, this thing that you guys had budgeted for, it just disappeared. So how does that work?
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
I would agree with Alderman, Wendy. It is treacherous, and it would seem to me to scream for a ARPA project, ARPA money. I don't know, we haven't got to how we're spending the ARPA money yet, but that would be a classic example of where to spend the ARPA money.
So I think what would help is if engineering and the administrator could give us a clearer idea of what are the variables that have caused this to be postponed for, for this year. And if you can't give it to us right now, and you need, that's fine, we can have an update from you somehow, but that, that would seem to answer some questions for the council.
Well, part of it was that there's, Goalt Hamilton is still doing some work on the intersection. The project had originally initiated with staff wanting to replace the old traffic signal and improve the corner on Whiteys for six hundred thousand dollars. And then it progressed to a one point two five million dollar project with capacity reductions proposed by the older person, and, and Goalt Hamilton not being comfortable with that. And there was debates about traffic volumes with the pandemic, and staff was not comfortable with the capacity reductions either. You know, I just started in June, and I didn't have the time to get into it as much as we wanted. We put it in the budget, but then we were directed to remove funding so that, you know, other projects in the city could proceed, and that was one that wasn't a, a very high priority for staff. Certainly, if you wanna put it back in, you can put it back in, and we'll just have to cut other projects out of the budget, or find other money elsewhere, I suppose.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Wend.
Can, and, and maybe, Mr. Vitas can help me, help me understand how that this works, so like?
The dynamic?
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, that if, because if, if, if things can be in the budget and then just kinda taken out, what is our role? I mean, I guess I have always thought if a policy is put in place by council, full steam ahead until we say, don't do that policy anymore. If we have budgeted something to, to be done, clearly, staff could come back and say, hey, we think that you shouldn't do that, and then we'd have to vote to, to pull it back, but just, I, I guess I'm.
I mean, hearing briefly from David for the first time on, on how that decision came about, and consulting engineers' involvement, and the cost of the project doubling in scope from the time of inception until today. I did not get into the details of this project with him. You know, I'm working with Carol at a much higher level in terms of trying to make the funds available across the spectrum of projects we have to do, you know. And again, I, I'm gonna echo what you said. I mean, if there's a priority that was established, and the priority would remain until removed. So, it's because the engineering department has made a recommendation that they feel, you know, to push it back, to allow for other projects to go forward because it's not ready. That's, that's the recommendation they made. So it's something that we can sit down and look at. And again, this, you know, we're at the front end of the budget, you know, we're nowhere near the adoption of the budget, and there's gonna be a lot of gymnastics between now and the time that you have a budget to adopt. So there's gonna be plenty of time to talk about the projects and the funding sources for the projects, but, you know, it's a valid argument, and it will be looked at.
Thank you.
So, my question is, does it remain until we vote it out? So it should be in the budget?
I think once you've approved the capital improvement plan, you've approved the capital improvement plan, and anything that's in the capital improvement plan would remain in the CIP. And then upon adoption of a follow-up CIP, then, only then would the CIP change. So you have an opportunity to approve the capital improvement plan annually as a part of your, your budgeting process.
Thank you. Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think this is actually a very clear indicator of our involvement in projects, the narrative, and that was in those meetings as well. We had the original design, and we got feedback, and we disagreed with the engineers, and it blew up in scope. I'm, we're not engineers. I don't know if we should have that level of decision-making power until it gets to the council floor. And if, as a result, maybe that derailed the project, or delayed it a little bit. So it's my preference, and I, I agree with Alderman Waldron, was take care of the swoop with the original intent of the six hundred thousand, inflation eight hundred thousand now. It might be much more tenable than what it has ballooned into. And, you know, that's just, I think it's a more practical compromise.
Thank you very much, Mr. Timian. Please continue, as it's eight o'clock.
Water projects, just go through. Maintenance in twenty? Our maintenance projects in twenty twenty-four, in comparison to twenty twenty-three, it shows where some increases were made and some other changes that were made. I don't know if you wanna go through these, or we wanna start going through these a little quicker. You can all get copies of the slides to, to look at later if you'd like. The twenty twenty-four resurfacing projects, we have Nineteenth Avenue from the Rock Island Corporate Limits to Seventh Street, about half a mile, one point two million dollar budgets. It's a federal aid project, eighty-twenty, so we'll be working with IDOT on that. We've got the Thirty-eighth Street from Thirty-second to Thirty-fifth Avenue reconstruction. It's a bad pavement with new sidewalks, utilities, and storms. Forty-eighth Street, from Forty-eighth Street A, you know, south of, south of Sixth Avenue. Does that make sense? I might have that wrong. Eleven hundred feet for one point three nine five million. It's a steep street and it has water, meaning storm work in it as well. Thirty-fourth Street from Fourth Avenue to the north of the tracks. This is an important project, getting people from the parks to.
Are we on the right side? Are we on the right side, Mr. Jarrett?
Pardon me? I think I might have some of the text there wrong. So I'll have to check that. Yeah.
How many houses are on that street?
I don't know where I got that from. Anyways, we will correct that. Thirty-fourth Street. It's a project that design has been kind of conceptualized to get bike facilities on the west side of the street from Fourth Avenue up to the sidewalk, along the University Quad Cities there, and across the, the railroad tracks. It'll provide a connection from Parks, the two parks there. The first phase of the Morgan Park, wide sidewalk and multi-use path from Twelfth Street Place to Tenth Street Place. It's a four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars project for that. Then we have the Mississippi Trail. This one is still kind of in flux because we're not sure exactly where the, how things are gonna develop there, and how properties are going to be swapped and things. But somewhere between Seventeenth and Nineteenth Street, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar project. Signal rebuild project at Thirty-sixth Avenue and Sixteenth Street, five hundred thousand dollars is another old signal that we'd like to, to replace. Then we have the twenty twenty-four, we hopefully will secure some federal funding for the Viaduct Bridge redecking. It's about a seven point five million dollar project. New traffic signal at River Drive and Twelfth Street for the Vibrant Arena. And then the Quiet Zone shooting for an FRA grant. Current projections are seven point six million dollars for the eleven crossings that span from one crossing in Rock Island to a shared crossing with East Moline. We're working on the grant proposal with a consultant this month. That's ongoing.
Mr. Schmidt.
Go ahead.
Do we, we share that crosswalk with Rock Island, or it falls in there, but it's close enough to ours that we have to do it together?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
Twenty twenty-five, here's the, the maintenance budget. And it shows the comparison of the previous three years of maintenance, essentially the same, two point five million, five hundred and twenty-five dollars in twenty twenty-five, twenty-five resurfacing projects. We have Nineteenth Avenue from Seventh Street to Sixteenth Street with the segment in there that was reconstructed a period, a while ago. I wasn't here then, but that'll be a, a good project, good piece of street to, to knock off the list. Then the resurfacing and reconstructions, one point two million and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those, we want to, to be able to use the pavement condition inventory system that's being developed. So this slide just kinda shows existing, what staff has historically used as kind of pavement condition, just to show that. Then we have the Seventh Avenue Reconstruction, Phase One. We have three million dollar grant. It's a five point five million dollar project, so that's going to be a challenge, but we'll start that process. And then the River-to-River Phase Two Construction, three point seven five million dollar project. And then Safe Roots to School Grant for Lincoln Irving School. Sidewalk replacement around three sides of the school, new pedestrian ramps, updating the pedestrian signal, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Electrical projects to be determined. Haven't selected those yet. This is just a slide of existing signals downtown. Yes, sir.
For the Lincoln Irving School, when that, when that came up, we'd asked staff to, and this, obviously before here, to go and talk with the school board and, and work with them, because some of the scuttlebutt is that that is going to expand to be somewhat like a Hamilton. And, and so my concern is, I don't want us to go and build a bunch of sidewalks and, and everything, and then them come in, and the school doubles in size, and what, what we're doing doesn't make sense for what the long term.
Their facility studies have included a larger footprint for Lincoln Irving, so they definitely have to be consulted about where they're at with those plans. They have bought up property very recently, right next to the school, so.
And, and I have real concerns. I mean, we have, we have issues on Seventh, getting parents in and out, and, and, and that Lincoln Irving is already a bit of a cluster, and if you double the size and all the extra kids are not within walking distance and will all be driven there, the board help us. And so we need to figure out some kind of engineering and traffic and what we're going to wind up doing if that does indeed happen, because it's gonna wind up being our responsibility, and we need to talk with that, the school board sooner than later on.
So it sounds like they need a school traffic impact type of study for pickup and drop-off.
Mr. Miss Hughes.
And there's.
And there's other streets nearby that are used a lot as well that are in bad condition too. So hopefully we can look just a little bit beyond that circle because they all tie into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, because they'll be used in every alley and every...
And they get used, yeah.
Going over the electrical projects future, there's more of Tony's projects. I don't know if you want to touch on any of these or should I just keep cranking?
Yeah, the rest of the program, it's...
I think pretty much yours, yeah.
So, Your Honor, so for the most part, the utilities are planning to spend capital improvement funds on the core projects that we've been working on, which for WPC, that is a bypass sewer on the south side of town to avert overflows of the sanitary sewer system. And you can see that we're working this year on Phase One of that project. The slide shows in the upper right corner, Phase Two of that project. And there, it was originally designed as a three-year project, but we expect to do both phases, Phase Two and Three next year. The one thing I would note about the utility funds is that it's somewhat dynamic. And so a good example would be for year 2025, the proj, the street projects aren't selected yet. And, and when we laid out our game plan for utility projects for 2024, for example, it was prior to a 48th Street Hill being selected and the 34th Street and at the railroad tracks being selected. And, and so those have significant impact on the utilities because it, it doesn't make sense to rebuild the road and leave the old infrastructure, buried infrastructure in place. So for the most part, I'll tell you that the, the slides that I'm going to show you are what we have in place, but if different road projects are selected, you know, we will adapt when that occurs. So for WPC, we're going to spend our money on manhole lining also. We've always spent money lining sewers, but one thing that's, that's noteworthy here is that there's now technology in place that will allow us to also line the, the connection at the lateral. So that's exciting for us. A street project is 45th Street there, south of 26th Avenue. And, and it's worth, somebody noted here earlier about the timing of that project with the timing of 47th Street. Those will have to be coordinated because the, the tree farm uses both of those, those access points.
Would that incre, would that help with INI then? The, I mean, I would assume that that's going to be huge for...
Yes.
Yeah.
The lining?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah. So, so then stormwater, this, this, one of the things we'll be talking about next week when we talk about stormwater finances is that typically stormwater, most, all of the capital funds go toward improving the drainage dur, when, when streets are reconstructed. And so the longstanding stormwater problems never get resolved. And this is a perfect example of one where there's money in the budget for 2023 to resolve a problem that's existed for probably 15 years or more. This is Alderman Schmidt, you mentioned the, the traffic along Avenue of the Cities as well as that 19th Avenue corridor. This will have to be coordinated as well because much of the road will need to be replaced as, at this crossing here under 19th Avenue, just east of 34th Street. So this is a longstanding problem that we expect to resolve, the stormwater funds. Another thing that, that we want to focus our, our funding on is box culvert maintenance. We have a lot of box culverts in town that, that just fill up with sediment and we don't have a program to clean them off. We intend to begin doing that. So some of the 2024 projects, after the bypass sewer on the south side of town is complete, we expect to focus our funds on upsizing the sanitary sewer downstream of the 39th Street pumping station. So that'll be a multi-year project. We haven't yet determined, or done any advanced engineering to determine how many phases that will be, but, but that will be impacting the Ben Butterworth Parkway as we construct that. And then regarding water, we'll continue to work on the, the red water issue. It's worthy to note also that regarding red water, we haven't had any additional red water customers added to our list since, what, 2015 or so? So that problem is, is holding steady. We're continuing to provide the, the fee exemption for those customers that are affected by that. And then the lead and copper rule will be impacting us soon. It'll be in effect in 2024 and then likely we'll have 20, 20 years to replace all of the lead water services in, in town. So 2025, one of the projects we want to do now is, this pipe on the right is, is just downstream of Prospect Pond. It goes underneath 35th Avenue and it's, it's, it's done with its useful life. And so this is a perfect example of a project that wouldn't be able to be done without additional stormwater funds. And then the, the picture on the right or at the left is something we intend to do. We actually want to incorporate some of these stormwater detention features in the Seventh Avenue corridor when Seventh Avenue is reconstructed. But once again, that's something that will, it'll help the, the conveyance system, but it's going to add some cost to some of the capital projects.
Mr. Went.
Is for the 19th Street, bike path and landscaping and all that is, are those going to be incorporated there as well?
Yeah, we'll be looking at those from here on out for all projects. So another significant project, it seems like just yesterday that this tank was built up at Stevens Park, but the industry standard for, for tank painting is, is 20 years. And so the, in 2025, that, that tank will be 22 years old. So we've had an engineering study done and we'll be working to, to upgrade the paint coating. And then last but not least is South Slope. We intend to be focusing a lot of energy on South Slope and we'll tell you a little bit more about that and the finances associated with it next week. And so that is the end of the show.
Thank you very much. Do we have further questions from the council on this multi-year CIP? All right. Yes, Mr. Waldron.
I don't know who this relates to, but buildings. We have, we've talked about one shop, one-stop shopping. We've going to do a study for the fire station. What is, are we going to be presented a plan for the building part?
I believe that's under the big ticket items for next week.
That's most, most, almost all of that falls under the large ticket items.
I'll hold my anticipations.
Yes.
Bring your wallet.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our committee of the whole meeting. I'll call the regular meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an invocation, Mr. O'Brien? Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Mercedes.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
I'm sorry, O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of Committee of the Whole Council on Executive Session Minutes of April 2nd, 2022, and August 30th, 2022. An appointment's made during Committee of the Whole this evening, September 13th, 2022. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 2020, I'm sorry, 3020-2022, and ordinance amending Chapter 24 personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 24-3207, Appendix 1, by adding a job description for rental housing and property inspector.
And for the council's information, we're going to be pulling item number 16.7 and 16.10 from the consent agenda here to, and putting it on the non-consent agenda for discussion.
Thank you. Consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1153-2022, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to and make certain certifications and assurances related to the Illinois Department of Transportation's Enhancement Program, ITEP. Grant requirements and conditions to design and construct a multi-use trail in the city of Moline and supporting the grant application to Illinois Department of Transportation for the enhancement program grant and authorizing staff to do any and all things necessary to prepare and submit said grant application to the Illinois Department of Transportation for the enhancement program grant. Council Bill 1154-2022, resolution amending budget resolution number 1232-2021 by authorizing various changes to line items in the fiscal year 2022 budget and authorizing the finance director to do all things necessary to complete said changes. Council Bill 1155-2022, a resolution authorizing a variance to Chapter 34 Water and Sewer, Section 3300, application for water service connections of the Moline Code of Ordinances, waiving the requirement at this time for 3039, 54th Street, to be required to extend a public water main acc, I'm sorry, across the frontage of said property, granting the petitioner or property owner permission to make a service line connection to the public main serving 5336, 31st Avenue Court, using a private easement with said property until such time as the water main is extended by others across the frontage. And as a condition of approval, requiring the petitioner or property owner and successors and assigns to agree to connect to the water main at such time as the water main is so extended and pay at that time that equitable share of such public main extension attributable to said property and to record these applications against the property. Council Bill 1156-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Leander Construction Incorporated for installation of bio-solids de-watering equipment at North Slope wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $1,175,000. Council Bill 1157-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an impact memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Construction Labor and Management Council for the North Slope wastewater treatment plant bio-solids screw press de-watering system project. Council Bill 1158-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to and make certain certifications and assurances related to the Federal Railroad Administration Railroad Crossing Elimination Program grant. Requirements and conditions to design and construct railroad crossing improvements in the city of Moline and supporting a grant application to the Federal Railroad Administration for the discretionary program grant and authorizing staff to do any and all things necessary to prepare and submit said grant application to the Federal Railroad Administration for the discretionary program grant. Council Bill 1160-2022, a resolution considering all rules and regulations of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners of the City of Moline, Illinois, 2022, promulgated, proposed, adopted, or approved by such board on Exhibit A as provided, approving same as an exercise of the city's home rule powers. Council Bill 1161-2022, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city's Moline and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 77, considering compensation for a newly established lateral transfer program and authorizing the city administrator and the director of human resources to execute same. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Who was the second? Mr. Went, okay. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Mercedes.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1159-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to professional services agreement with FGM Architects Incorporated for Moline Central Fire Station that shall serve as a master agreement and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to amendment number one to the professional services agreement with FGM Architects Incorporated for new central fire station Phase One, fire section programming study and location analysis for the amount of $96,400 and an additional allowance of $15,000 for geotechnical borings if required.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I just was not clear from reviewing the materials on where, what we're doing budgetarily, where the funding is coming from and how that's being addressed.
Mr. Vitas or Ms. Barnes?
Care, I'll be at discussions with Mike and Sarah regard, regarding that question.
Can I apologize for just not being able to consideration those who could ask the council if they lose a portion of their $600,000 of the two weeks of life insurance?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, and then Mr. Waldron.
Could I get a reminder of what the current status of the contingency line item is?
We have a hard, I'm so sorry, 600 is the amount farther. I think there's $400,000 total in the 22 budget and maybe spent 300, 40,000 total.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Waldron.
Hand in hand with my last question about what we're talking about with buildings, isn't this a little of a cart before the horse in that we're already going to design for something we haven't even decided we can afford to build, whether we're going to bond or whatever? I'd like to make a motion to table this item for 30 days.
Second.
Right. Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Went. There's no discussion for a table, so roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Mercedes.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Nay.
And we have five ayes and two nays. That motion passes.
Thank you very much. So we move to our next hold item?
Council Bill 1162-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk and city staff to apply to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for Tourism Attractions and Festivals grant the amount of $100,000 to help fund the city of Moline's annual festival in June 2023, authorizing the mayor, city clerk and staff to do all things necessary to prepare and submit said grant application.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Williams. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Is this an 80/20 or are we just getting the 100,000 if DECO decides to give it to us?
Mr. Vitas.
Yeah, the, the, the grant itself, there's I guess no limit to what you can ask for. But we, we estimated that we would like to use about 100,000 and that either matching that with funds budgetarily when the budget is adopted as well as through the fundraising efforts and commitments that were made to the city during the Moline 150, from existing contributors, existing sponsors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Is, is there a timing component of when, like, what are the grant application deadlines, I presume?
The deadline's the 23rd. Yeah, so that's, that's part of a reason for the rush.
Yes, I've made clear to Mr. Vitas that we need a more formal report on the internal study post the 150. And so that, the timing of that is just outside of this timing for this application, so.
And that report will be forthcoming on the 27th.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Went.
And, and this deadline's the 23rd?
I believe it is, yes.
If I remember right, reading through it, we're, we're committing that we're going to spend 100,000, right? As well as the 100,000, I mean, that's part of our application, so we're committing ourselves.
We, we are requesting 100,000, but in terms of the commitment, usually it is a matching grant, but it doesn't have to be 100,000. So when we originally applied for this grant and were denied this grant, we requested 150,000 and we didn't get it. Then we went to the, and that was to match the 150 in ARPA dollars. So it was basically a dollar-for-dollar match last year when we applied for it. Not getting 150, what, we then went and fundra, did a fundraiser and got corporate sponsorship of over 150,000 to make the Moline 150 actually happen. So rather than repeating Moline 150 and calling it 151 or whatever people were calling it on the straits, they were naming it for us. We're looking at a smaller scaled-down event, two-day event, not to the scale that we've done this last party. That was a bit too much for, for us frankly. But it would be two days. It would not be all day long either. It'd be more of an evening event on a Friday and then basically an afternoon, evening on a Saturday and that would be it. So a smaller scaled-down event, smaller budget. So, a smaller scaled-down event, smaller budget, and, uh, that's what we're, we're trying to meet the deadline to get the application, and this is what we're trying to do.
And if we're moving forward with this, and we either decide not to go forward with the festival at all?
Correct.
Lose the grant, what are, what are we talking, some cost-wise?
Just our time. Just our time.
And, and I guess we, we can say, without actually looking at all the results, the
actual numbers that I actually want to look at, it was a success, um, there was plenty of sponsors, I'm sure there, we could have gotten even more, um, and, but aside from that, people kept on asking, we want something else, so, uh, I think the appetite's there. Um, but yeah, if it's just costing staff time, I'd be supportive, and, uh, even before we get the, the actual numbers.
Mr. Went?
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and, uh, June, I think it, put in here was the, the time for when we were going to do the event?
Tendently, we're looking at June as opposed to the end of August, yeah.
What was, what was the, the thought process?
Not a lot. I mean, just looking for timeframes at work, you know, there's a lot of events happening, and we just happened to get lucky at the tail end of August, uh, with this particular event taking place when it did. I mean, there was a lot of lead-up to this in the Iowa State Fair and other events that were going on, so, I mean, you could tap the audience out, right? I mean, you could really tap people out.
Well, and we will definitely need to talk with our partners at Visit Quad Cities, et cetera, to make sure we're on the right timeframe and all.
That's, that's part of it as well.
Yeah.
There's a lot of pre-planning we need to do, but we have to have a tentative date out there, so we said June, and, you know, they tend not to want to fund one-off events, uh, could be a reason why they set the Sesquicentennial, you know, was not eligible last year, uh, when they made their decision, uh, and then they don't want to fund recurring events, so this is really not really any recurring event at this point. We had our one-off event called the Sesquicentennial, this would be, again, just a, just a special event for the city, and then in future years, if it goes really, really, really well, you know, they may not step up to the plate to fund it, but we're looking at how they have funded all the projects in and around Chicago, too, because that's where most of the money goes from D.C., you know?
Thank you. Okay, uh, no further discussion, roll call, please. Alderman O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, and that motion passes. First reading ordinances, council bill 3021-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 34 Water and Sewers of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section 34-1100, grounds for termination, section 34-2103, service taps, section 34-2121, charges and collections, section 34-2126, deposit for test of meter, section 34-3402, pretreatment of wastewater, section 34-3403, environmental remediation wastewater, and section 34-3414, pretreatment charges and fees. By repealing said sections in their entirety and acting in lieu thereof, new sections 34-1100, 2103, 2121, 2126, 3402, 3403, and 3414, dealing with the same subject matter. Council bill 3022-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 24 Personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section 24-3207, appendix one, by adding a job description for right-of-way utility technician. Council bill 3023-2022, an ordinance designating the Skelly Gas Station located at 8020 Fifth Avenue, Moline, Illinois, as a locally designated landmark. Council bill 3024-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 35 Zoning and Land Development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting an amendment to the zoning map incorporated therein as section 35-3103, 151 19th Avenue. Council bill 3025-2022, an ordinance amending chapter four Alcoholic Liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter four in its entirety, enacting in lieu thereof one new chapter four dealing with the same subject matter. Council bill 3026-2022, an ordinance amending chapter eight Buildings and Other Construction and Building Services of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section eight-7202, registration of residential rental property, by adding amendments to reflect the new fee structure as a result of the 2022 fee review effective January 1, 2023. Council bill 3027-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 11 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section 11-1101, local amendments to fire code, section 11-1101.1, fees, and section 11-2116, same fees, and by adding amendments to reflect the new fee structure as a real, as a result of the 2022 fee review effective January 1, 2023. Council bill 3028-2022, an ordinance approving a special use permit for a cannabis dispensary, Deep Roots LLC, at 2727 Avenue of the Cities. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you very much. Uh, miscellaneous business, I have very little, um, by way of that, however, I want to thank Mr. Williams for filling in for me quite a bit at different, um, events that are happening. There's a lot going on in Moline right now, um, taming of the slew, a couple ribbon cuttings, the, um, TBK Bank Marathon is coming up, there's a lot to go to and, um, feature wonderful parts of our city, so thank you for that work, uh, in anticipation of that work, and, um, looking forward to a co-hosting award meeting with Mr. Timian on Monday, uh, related to development and redevelopment and part of his board, so, looking forward to connecting with citizens there, um, and that's all I have, Mr. Williams.
A little disappointed that Alderman Waldron didn't, uh, vote for the, uh, the party since we moved it so he could at the end.
Yeah, that's the whole reason. You, you might remember I didn't vote for the party to begin with, I think the money would be better spent on our roads, but that's a philosophical argument I didn't win at the time, so do what you want with the party.
We'll have a good time, that's what we did. Um, yeah, the pickleball tournament is the 16th through the 18th, it's $12,000 in prizes, and they've maxed out at 400 players, so that'll be a, a big gig, and the taming of the slew, Sunday, the 18th at eight, and of course, the Belgian Fest, uh, Sunday afternoon from 12 to 4 up to Stevens Park, it's always a good time, so, just encourage everybody to come out just for a little bit, to one of those events. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Macias?
Uh, thank you, I just want to remind everybody, Hispanic Heritage Month is starting, uh, September, uh, 15th through October 15th, um, there's plenty of events, uh, we always, we have marcas on, on Fridays, but there's other events around the Quad Cities that I encourage, uh, people to check out, and that, don't, and I don't know if you saw, uh, there was a, some social media uproar about a festival that happened, so, just, uh, be aware that there's, uh, people who, uh, try to, you know, make money off of these things, and, and we have some really good authentic events in the area that are far better than those that are, uh, brought about, uh, by national chains and organizations, so, that's it, Your Honor.
Uh, just to inform you, I will be making our annual proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, but at the event that's happening outside of the, um, chamber.
Gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Went?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Coincidentally, I had, uh, two people reach out to me this week, and then I saw, uh, one of them do it myself, uh, about our sanitation, uh, workers going above and beyond, like, things falling out of the container or being on the ground, and them going out and picking it up, and, uh, and so, uh, thank them, thank them for, uh, doing a very thankless job, uh, and, uh, keeping our, uh, community clean, so thank you very much for that. And then you stole a little bit of my thunder for the, uh, the pickleball. Of that 400-plus, I, I was told that over half of the people are registrants from outside of the area that would be traveling in, and so, you know, that, this is something that moves the needle, that winds up bringing, uh, investment into our community, and so, I think, uh, the color, or I think they're doing flags at, uh, uh, 8:25 with the Boy Scouts, uh, Moyers put me up to this, uh, at 8:25 on, uh, Saturday morning, uh, the, the Boy Scouts are doing the, uh, the flag, so, uh, I encourage you guys to go out and check it out and, uh, support, uh, pickleball in, uh, Moline.
Thank you, Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I would just like to bring attention to, uh, this weekend, the, this is the annual NAMI Walk, that's the, uh, National Alliance on Mental Health, it will be taking place, um, in a partner city in, in Bettendorf. It, it's just, it's a great opportunity, it's an annual event, they happen all around the country, raising money for mental health care, and so, I would encourage everyone to participate if you are not already. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Waldron?
Yes, Your Honor, I, I wonder if we could get an update, we spent a lot of time and effort on the art in Moline, and where we're going to put it, and what we're going to do, and we have heard zip and zero since then, I know, understand there's a committee, but I would, I'd like to see where those efforts are going, or have been going.
Yep, yep, there's, um, there'll be some updates coming, they've, they've been very active, I can tell you that they have been meeting quite frequently.
Oh, I can see their work all over town.
They've been, it's a new committee, Mr. Waldron, so we have to get things moving appropriately. All right, Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Vitas or Mr. Vitas? Hey, thank you. Uh, any further public comment out there? Yep, we have two.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council, um, I hesitate in saying this after Alderman Waldron's comments, but I wanted to be here tonight to, um, see some information about the capital improvements plan. As you'll know, as you'll recall, the public art and placemaking plan that was adopted a little more than a year ago does have a 2% requirement for certain capital improvements in the downtown area, and so, um, I just wanted to draw your attention to that, I appreciate the opportunity to provide information, work with your staff, I've talked with Mr. Vitas and Mr. Vitlak about, um, that component of the public art plan, and we're looking forward to seeing what the committee can do and, and bringing you an update on that particular topic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, my name is Daryl Taylor, um, 2140 23rd Avenue, Rock Island, Illinois, but I'm here tonight on behalf of my daughter Jasmine Taylor, uh, who has property at 314 17th Avenue, Moline. I wanted to come in today and thank the council for your approval and the ability for your residents to make use of the sidewalk completion program. I've called about three times, I kept saying I would come, would come, I have to go back and forth to Chicago, deal with my dad's, uh, issues, health issues, but, uh, I want to thank you for that, but not only thank you for your program, but also give kudos to Zach, is Zach here today?
Don't think so. No, but he did get your message.
He, he, two years ago, I was working with my daughter to get this program, and I won't take you very long, I'm sorry.
It's fine.
Two years ago, I worked with my daughter, since they got programs such as this, I was a, I'm a retired educator, retired superintendent, was the dean of Moline, so I knew a lot about these things. So, got it going, talked with Zach, no funds available, called him back, always great. So, he is an excellent individual who represents your city very well, not only that, those guys who come out and work, being retirees, I was sitting there every day, every day, and I, again, an old superintendent businessman, every time they pour anything, I'd be asking, "I'll come, I'll come," but they were great. So, I just want to say to you, I know you get a lot of complaints, so, I want to make the time to come out and say thank you for your consideration to make this available for your residents, and then say, talk about Zach and those five men or six people crew, they did an excellent job, and so, I just want to make sure I, I made the time, my daughter would have came, but she's a teacher, and I knew these meetings run late, so I told her, "I will be there, and I'll sit for as long as it takes," so, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, thanks for taking the time.
Yes, please come to the microphone.
Hello, good evening, my name's Jody Fisk, and I'm a resident of the city of Moline, I live at 3522 51st Street, Mr. Waldron's, um, board, and I'm here tonight just, uh, to offer a couple of comments about, um, the issue of the accessory dwelling units. I realize that, um, this is still something that's under consideration, and it's still, um, something that's, uh, not been finalized and presented to the city in terms of, you know, a final proposed ordinance, um, and I understand there is a hearing before the planning commission tomorrow, but I'm unable to attend that, attend that meeting, I'm getting ready to leave town on a vacation, and so I wanted to take advantage of just an opportunity, um, to just, uh, present you with some thoughts this evening. Um, you know, I've been a resident of the city of Moline for close to 30 years, and I used to work for the city, um, so I have a little bit of insight into, you know, the workings of the city and how some of these issues, um, are addressed and can affect the city. Um, you know, I, I want to just point out that, um, you know, I, I understand the face, the fact that there are many communities that are facing, you know, significant, um, housing shortages and a lack of affordable housing, and in such communities, um, adopting some type of, um, alternative or accessory dwelling unit usage might be appropriate, and I just want to urge you, as you consider this, um, type of ordinance, um, to, you know, I would urge you to not adopt an ordinance that would allow the residents who, um, live on single-family dwelling properties to be able to have these units as rental properties in, in the community. There may be a, a place where that's appropriate, but I really feel that that's going to be, if that is permitted, and there isn't, um, any, any disincentive for, for people to adopt these, and they proliferate in the neighborhood, I, I truly believe that it's going to have a negative effect on the quality of life in Moline's neighborhoods. Sadly, I think that over the last, you know, 10 to 20 years, we've seen a lot of people that have left the city, unfortunately, they've moved out of town, maybe gone over to the Iowa side of the river, many of us have, have stayed here because we love Moline, we love our community, and we love our neighborhoods, um, we believe that we've got a great community in terms of strong schools, we've got, uh, a great downtown, and we also have these wonderful neighborhoods, and, you know, if, if we, uh, pass an ordinance that permits, you know, unfettered, uh, introduction of rental, um, accessory dwelling units in our single-family residence areas, that completely changes the nature, the nature of the city. It means that every, every property, every single-family property becomes a potential rental property, and I don't think that that's what most people want. Um, I think that Moline has added a lot of affordable housing over the past 10 years, um, we've seen, I live in a neighborhood that has a lot of resident, a lot of rental property in the area, there's a lot of apartments, a lot of condominiums, um, and, and, you know, that's, and that's great, they provide for off-street parking, um, you know, those, those areas are, are designated as having multiple unit, um, you know, use, unlike our single, uh, you know, single home or single-family dwelling units. Um, so, I really think that you, I urge you to consider the fact that adding that type of, um, use for the property can really contribute to the problems that you probably already hear about in terms of adequacy of on-street parking, the issues that you have with noise, the issues that you have, you know, with, uh, density in, in our, our neighborhoods, and if you think about it, you know, I, I feel like I live in a neighborhood that doesn't have a lot of density, I'm fortunate for that. Um, I think about some of the neighborhoods in the city that do have a great deal of density, and, and adding to that density is not going to contribute to the quality of life for those residents. Um, and, and as somebody, again, who has worked for the city of Moline, I understand what happens when neighbors are upset with neighbors, and so, if somebody has a rental property in their backyard and their neighbor's not happy about it, those things end up spilling over and consuming city time, energy, uh, that can better be spent other places. So, you know, again, um, you know, looking around the city, I think that we have, we've done a lot of great things, we have a lot of work to do, there are areas that we have revitalized, there are areas that need to be revitalized, we have a lot of property that's available, uh, for development, you know, there are empty buildings, um, in some locations, there's, there's property that we can use if we have a great need for additional affordable housing in the city, um, but I really, uh, believe that this is, uh, something that, you know, if it would get passed, and if we would allow this to proliferate in the city, I, I, I just urge you to consider the fact that it could change the, the tenor, the nature of, of our neighborhoods. Um, I think this was, you know, there was an article in the paper in July, I haven't heard a lot of people talk about this issue, I don't think a lot of people are aware of the fact that this is, is being, uh, considered, um, and I, I feel that if a lot, if more residents knew that it was possible that we could adopt an ordinance that would allow all of their neighbors to put rental property on their property, this chamber would be packed. I really, truly, uh, believe that. So, um, again, I know that you, you don't have a final ordinance to consider, uh, before you, but I hope that you, um, will, you know, permit me for somewhat prematurely appearing in front of you and offering my, uh, thoughts and my concerns, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Executive session, please.
Your Honor, I make a motion to the council convene an executive session for the purpose of pending probable or imminent litigation, five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven, and property acquisition, five ILCS one twenty slash two C five.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes.